Okay. Okay, welcome everyone. Um, this is our regular monthly meeting for April. Start off with the land acknowledgement and we acknowledge and appreciate that the land on which we gather is the traditional onceded territory of the Mi'kmaqie First Nation. And we've occupied this territory since time immemorable. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Okay, under the approval of agenda, I know that the deputy and councillor McCabe, we want to move number, is it 6.1 Planning and Heritage? To 6.3, is that correct? And so 6.1 becomes water and wastewater utility or sewer. And councillor Twill said that he'd like to follow with parks, recreation and leisure. So 6.1 would be water and wastewater, 6.2 would be parks, recreation, leisure. And 6.3 will be planning and development and then 6.4 and so forth. All right. Moved by the deputy, seconded by councillor McCabe, all those in favor, please just raise your hand. Councillor Ramsay's not here, so his presence isn't, his absence is noted and I have adoption. Oh, just back to approval of the agenda, there's a request to amend a resolution that we passed for the FCM, so that will fall under new business. Did you send that out Tracy? So that was sent out. And it's just instead of a one-year term for the FCM National Board, it is a, or it will be, a two-year term. Could be that, no problem, okay. Okay, adoption of previous draft minutes of council, regular meeting of March 11th, 2025, special meetings, March 24th, March 25th, March 31st. And then public planning meetings, March 6th, March 12th and March 27th. Moved by councillor McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. I just noticed on the March 12th-
Can we just get them on the floor and then, then you can bring it right up? So you're moving it?
Sure.
Okay, and seconded by the deputy. You want to speak to it, sir?
I'm just missing in the attendance of the March 12th meeting.
Is that a planning? It is a public planning. You don't have it? Okay. Do we note it? Any other concerns? Okay, moved by councillor McKinnon, seconded by deputy mayor Yankoff, all in favor, just raise your hands. Business arise in there to the minutes. See you none, move on, okay. So 6.1 is water and wastewater? Councillor Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. We had a busy month in the water and sewer utility department. The committee met three times, the regular committee meeting on March the 11th and we had two special meetings on March 18th and March 24th. We do have one resolution coming forward here tonight for your consideration and if anyone has any questions, I'll gladly try to answer them or our manager Josh will help me out, thank you.
Okay, do you want to put that on?
Your worship, sorry?
Want to put the resolution on right away? Good.
Your worship, water and sewer utility resolution for this evening is moved by councillor Bob Duran and seconded by councillor Justin Matarch. Whereas the city of Charlestown passed a policy resolution of April 10th, 2000, that city council confirm its policy not to entertain applications for water service to properties outside the municipal boundary of the city of Charlestown without first receiving approval from city council to do so. Be it resolved that city council approves the request for service received from Justin McDonald, representative for the owner. The request is for a water service to 511 Brackley Point Road, PID number 626259 and be it further resolved that the costs associated with the development or any future services will be paid by the property owner. As well, services will be billed with a 25% premium as a surcharge for services provided outside the city of Charlestown municipal boundaries.
Questions called? Oh, okay, all those in favor? Okay, contrary, okay. Good. Councillor McKinnon? Oh, Councillor Ryan, all right, okay. Next is parks, recreation and leisure. Councillor Mitchell Twill, Chair, Ward 4. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to move our agenda item, Parks and Rec, to the second slot on tonight's agenda. Parks and Recreation Committee will be presenting two resolutions tonight for council's consideration. I will entertain any questions that you may have or may not have, you can talk to me afterwards, whatever, whatever, whatever you wish. Our manager's here, Frank Quinn, and if there's no questions, CAO Sue, I think we'll move forward with the resolutions, thank you. Okay, resolution number one, CAO Sue Fraser.
Parks, Recreation, Leisure Activities Resolution Number One, your worship is moved by councillor Mitchell Twill and seconded by councillor Justin Matarch. Be it resolved that council approves closing the interior lane of the Victoria Park roadway to vehicular traffic earlier than May 1st to allow for the laneway to be used as an active transportation pathway beginning April 9th, 2025.
Councillor Twill, you wish to speak to it?
Yeah, I do. I, of course, I'm in Victoria Park pretty much every day and I noticed that on the inside lane, we have young families walking to the playground equipment, particularly the Canadian Tire Playground area where it was constructed just a few years ago. And in some occasions, I would suggest it's a fault. Young families are walking on that inside lane with the traffic coming behind them or towards them. So that is the motivation for the resolution here tonight, it's to move it up. I did send an email to our manager, Parks and Rec, and of course, if the resolution passes tonight, it has to coordinate with Public Works, put the proper amenities in place, but this is truly a safety issue. Now, not just opening up for active transportation, it's a safety issue and I appreciate your support, thank you.
Okay, deputy mayor Yankoff?
Thank you, your worship. And just a question for councillor Twill. Obviously, I support this resolution, but I'm just wondering, this seems to be a common trend going forward and could we, could we consider adding a friendly amendment to this resolution that would put this in for more like a five-year increment instead of us coming back every single year to open early? Why, I mean, you've been advocating for ages that it should be a permanent thing all year round, so for now, if we can't, can we at least say that going forward, you know, it's, it's the beginning of April, you know, give or take a storm or something every year going forward, just a thought. Yeah, anyways.
I'll second that. Okay, councillor Twill?
No, it's, it's a good idea and I think we did have the discussion at the Parks and Rec Committee that I think upon tonight, and our manager can, can further elaborate, that we would like to put it in place, have the mechanism, mechanism in place where it doesn't have to come back to council. Our, our senior management team in Parks and Rec should be able to make that decision based on, you know, weather and what's, what's taking place with the weather. But, yeah, no, I agree, it's, it's, before we entertain the amendment, if it's okay with you, I'd like to ask our manager-
I was just going to ask, I'll ask. Frank, can you just add some information?
Yes, your worship and deputy mayor Alana and councillor Twill, so we are looking at actually updating the bylaw, so it's going to be updated in the near future and we're going to add that the whole bylaw needs an overhaul, so I'm going to spend time on it, but that is one of the areas that would be, that it would be April 1st and that it could potentially stay open until even the end of November if weather permits. So expanding it, our climate, our weather has changed and we're able to get open, hopefully today is the last day of snow, so that we all-
Don't count on it. CAO Sue, do you want to add anything to that?
Your worship, I know, I can speak to Frank's comment about the bylaw being, needing an overhaul because I had my hand in writing that very, very long time ago, so it's definitely due for an update.
It doesn't show your age. So we'll just leave it as it be and then we'll fix that in the, in the bylaw. So, did you want to speak there councillor Beck, I know you had your, can you just stand there, please?
It was just along the same line.
Same thing.
Yeah, so I'll wait until later.
Questions called? Okay, all those in favor, please put up your hand. Nine zero. Okay, you want to go to the second resolution, please?
Yes, your worship, Parks, Recreation, Leisure Activities, Second Resolution is moved by councillor Mitchell Twill, seconded by councillor Justin Matarch. Be it resolved that council approves Simmons Sports Field as a site location for a new multi-sport artificial turf field to be constructed in 2025 and that this project was approved in the 2025-2026 Parks and Recreation Capital Budget.
Okay, councillor Twill, councillor Beck?
Thank you, your worship, members of city council. Enroll in any business degree anywhere in any institution. One of the first things they'll teach you if you're wanting to open up a business or you're thriving to expand your business is location, location, location. Simmons Field is the best location in the city of Charlestown, bar none. No other site comes close, not even in the ballpark. And having said that, you look at it from an educational perspective and you've got a junior high school, Queen Charlotte, you have a senior high school, Colonel Gray, surrounded by five elementary school. In terms of logistics, it's a walkable, it's walkable for the participants, whether they leave school after they're attending school, go to practice or practice later on. This is the first time that the city of Charlestown will embark, embark upon a project of this magnitude. An artificial field turf, a synthetic fiber, latest in technology, not only player-friendly, but it, it gives our participants an opportunity to not have to worry about when five o'clock rolls around in the fall and they have to leave the field. We're going to be able to utilize that venue much longer in the fall and in the spring. I want to take this opportunity to thank our staff to once again go back as a result of the amendment, to go back and look at, from an analytical perspective, from a philosophical perspective, from an ownership perspective, from a number of different perspectives as to why this is the number one choice. And if you looked at your report, it checks off all the boxes, it really does. People in this city want this venue to be owned, operated and have field bookings done by our senior staff in Parks and Recreation. That message is loud and clear and has been for some time. I draw your attention to Simmons Sports Arena, North River Road. There was a debate at one time whether or not it should go to the university and the community got really involved in that, that conversation. And I can tell you today, people are very, very pleased and the reviews are still coming in that the new sports arena in North River Road is, is being met with fantastic approval. The field turf and the sports arena complement one another. Participants are going to be able to use the dressing rooms, that was one of the major reasons why, there's six dressing rooms in that facility, so that the participants that are involved in outdoor sports are going to be able to use the, use the dressing rooms. Secondly, we have a real nice community facility there, we can hold team meetings and fundraisers and whatever the case may be. So there's so many positive attributes, so many upsides to why this particular venue is the right choice for the city of Charlestown. Now, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd like to turn it over to our manager.
Some information?
He can add anything that I left out.
Okay. Thank you. He's deferred to you there, Mr. Frank Quinn, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship and Chair Twill. So I guess ultimately at the end of the day, I think councillor Twill covered most of it and I just maybe want to draw people's attention to the, to, to the considerations that were, let me just find it here in my write-up.
Is that in your background or Frank?
Yeah, so if you look at the background, you'll see all the areas that were considered. So when we reviewed the 2017 report, some things have changed since that assessment report was done. So we went through and determined the most suitable location to construct an artificial turf field based on the following considerations and these were the considerations that were for the most part in the assessment report. And it was city-owned land, we'd like to build a facility on city-owned land that we can fully operate and manage and control. The city has grown, our current sport fields don't meet the needs of all the user groups we have, we just don't have enough sports fields. So if we have an artificial turf field that will add potentially about five fields because you can book it, you know, 1,500 to 2,000 hours a year, where a natural grass field, you can book 300 to 350. Then as well, it's, you know, the Simmons location has the required footprint, it is a large location. The project scope only requires a turf field to be built, constructed because of all the other amenities with our, our new Simmons facility and those necessary amenities such as changing rooms, washrooms, community room. For the most part, there is sufficient parking there, you know, if we had a large event at both venues, we would look at potentially using other parking lots in the vicinity, which we, we do, we partner with the school all the time, they use our parking lot, we use theirs. And then, of course, it is centrally located, it's an accessible location with a fully accessible building as well, the Simmons Sports Center. It's a flexible site for the future as well, it is a large property and that it's adjacent, of course, as councillor Twill mentioned, to two large schools. We've also done a light layer assessment, was completed and there is minimal impact on the properties around that and lights have even improved since 2017. We just recently installed new lights at Central 1 and it's, you'd hardly know they were on because they're that, they're that directional. So that would be the only other things I'd ask, but there is, we, we did look at every and we looked at three additional sites along with the initial sites and that was our biggest thing is to find what is the best location. If we hadn't been able to find a location on city-owned property, then we would have looked elsewhere and that's where we would have then had to reach out and negotiate, you know, with potentially partners and whatnot, but what we felt is that we found the best location and the best location that came out, which originally was in the 2017 report and then when our staff went through and reviewed it, was the Simmons, Simmons site.
So Frank, I know that Tracy, thank you Tracy for adding the report, it's part of the documents that's in your OneDrive. It's from CBCL that did the study, then presented it back in 2017. And if anyone wishes to access it, it's on our charlestown.ca website, just go to Residential Services and scroll down to Studies, Reports and Projects and it's there in alphabetical order. Okay, councillor Beck?
Thank you. Just before I begin tonight, I do want to make a couple of clarifications. One, I do support the construction of the turf field in Charlestown. And the second is that of any comments that I make tonight, I do not want them to be construed as any slight towards the work of Charlestown Privateers Football Club or any other potential user because as someone who grew up playing sports my whole life, coaching in minor sports, coaching in school sports, being a principal at a school, I fully support youth participation in sports and I see the value in it. So please do not take any of that as a, any kind of slight. My concern around this project is the process that was involved and I think it's important that we go back and kind of review some of those points. So, and that's really what the source of my, my questions here is tonight. So eight years ago, the report was done in 2017 and as the mayor or manager alluded to, Simmons was recognized as a site. I was elected in 2022 as the Ward 3 councillor. In the two years that I've served in this role, two plus years, there's been no mention of this field being built or the turf being built, no conversations with me nor with the residents of the area. Fast forward to January of this year, 2025, Parks and Rec Committee makes a recommendation to go to build turf at Simmons, bring it forth to council for further discussion. Okay? February 11th, we received a report from Parks and Rec as information, which means no discussion, it's just the information is coming in and that it would be discussed further at the capital budget presentation on February 25th. So we get to February 25th, which is the first time we actually get to talk about it. And at that time, I raised concerns, not about the project itself, but about the costing of it and looking to see are there potential funding partners that we could look at to reduce the load in the city and come up with a user agreement that would work. The other part of that motion was to remove the name from Simmons and to keep, keep the funding in there for artificial turf, but remove, remove the name Simmons. That was agreed to in an eight to two vote here in council. So that's what was passed and at that meeting, I was also accused of coming in at the last minute, the 11th hour and trying to blindside the process, but I see it differently. I was asking a question and doing my job as a city councillor. And that was the first time that we had an opportunity to talk about that. So then on March 31st, following the adoption of our operational budget, councillor Twill rose and said there was going to be a meeting on April 3rd at the Parks and Rec Committee meeting, which I attended and at which I asked a lot of questions. And I got answers from the chair and from manager Quinn. So what I've learned from that is that what was done was an internal review when that was not what was looked at. We were looking at to see are there possible arrangements that we could be entering into for user agreements with external partners? Okay? So when I listened to them, when I got my answers from that meeting, there were three major points that I'm, I have concerns with. The first one is, is that there was little to no consultation done with external stakeholders. There was a preliminary conversation with Susie Dillon, the MLA for Sherwood, whatever, Stone- Susie Dillon, the MLA for Sherwood, whatever, Stone Park, whatever, District 11, about a field at Stone Park. There was a brief conversation with Albert Roach about developing the events ground for the field down there. And I came to learn that there was a whole bunch of work done, developing, potentially developing that field down there, that I was unaware of when I made this original motion. So there was no consultation with UPEI, which was the second choice, nor was there any consultation with CADC. So we've had existing relationships, East Link, Bell Alliance Center, that have worked for residents where we've entered into third-party agreements to serve as best practice. And in this day, in this particular instance, there's an insistence that this field be wholly owned, wholly operated, and wholly controlled, which also means 100% responsibility for construction, 100% for operation, 100% for repairs and maintenance. So I think what we should be doing is we should be looking, can we leverage our funds in a better way? The second point is, is that this is being touted as a multi-sport field. Yet there was no consultation done with the large majority of the users of this field to see what their current stance is eight years later. We have no idea. We've heard from one group throughout this process, Privateers Football Club, which represents about 6% of the potential users of this field, 180, roughly, according to the CBCL report, roughly 180 users of potential 3,000 users. My last point is this. There was no information shared with the residents of the area, nor with me as the councillor of that ward, prior to January 15th meeting. Since this story has come to light, I've had many residents who've reached out to me. And I've gone door-to-door to get feedback from residents in the area to see about the project. While there has been pockets of support, there were many concerns from residents that were expressed to me about the project. And they usually centered around these common themes: extended hours and seasonal use of the operation of the field, light and noise pollution, lack of parking and further congestion in an already busy part of the city, and the presence of forever chemicals that are in turf fields that are being located in a residential neighborhood. So those were the prevalent themes that did come back. And many of the residents were still even unaware after it was in reported in CBC and The Guardian and whatnot, they were still even unaware that this project was even going ahead or even being considered. So in the end, I am not going to be supporting this motion because of those three points. And I think if we're going to be committing multimillion-dollar projects, I think we should be having all the conversations we can have with external stakeholders and potential funding partners. I think the residents of our city deserve that. And I think we have to do a better process of exhausting those opportunities, exhausting those conversations, before we enter into decisions of this magnitude. So I will be voting against this motion tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. Question called? Questions called?
Yeah, can you go straight ahead?
Oh, go ahead. No, no, I just asked. Question called?
No, I'm just following up on what Counselor Beck says. Thank you, sorry. So is this the chart in here, Counselor Twill, is this a recent review that was done? So since our budget meeting, we had a consultant hired to go out and do this review, or who did the review?
Yeah, could you just answer?
Yeah, I am. That's my first question. And my second question, has there been any consultation done with the public on this big project in the area?
Two questions.
Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Counselor Twill?
Thank you. The review, the recent review, and the review prior to that, when it was submitted for capital projects, was completed by our senior management team in Parks and Rec. Then, when the amendment came to light, they were asked to do another review, which they did. They've taken a very analytical, a very philosophical, they looked at a number of things, from logistics to the location of the footprint of where this proposed field is located, on North River Road. I can tell you that some of the issues that Council Ward has mentioned, parking, we have parking at Colonel Gray, student parking lot, teachers parking lot. There's also parking at Spring Park Church, which some of the user groups, community groups utilized. When those parking lots aren't being used, we, as our manager said, that's happened over the last number of years. That's not a new phenomenon. There is a planned open house that will be taking place, like we did with Simmons Sports Arena, to ask, answer any questions that the residents may have, any concerns. And from a technical point of view, our staff will be there to answer them and to bring information, accurate information, to the residents in the community. As I said, this facility is a walkable community. A lot of our participants will be walking there, not just traveling by car. So to me, that's all part of our goal, wanting to become a livable city, is making our city a walkable city. And that's why Simmons is the ideal location. So I'm very confident, and I have been for some time, not only with the two reports that were done by the consulting engineers and the involvement of our senior staff, but all the work that's been put into this file, into this location, over the last, I don't know, number of weeks. This is not a new phenomenon. This has been on the books for a long time. Cornwall has two artificial field turf. Summerside has one. Strafford, they're going guns blazing, if you follow what's taking place in the reports that you read in the broadcast and print media. And here we are, the capital city, the capital city. And when we talk about ownership, we talk about controlling the destination of that venue, it makes all the sense in the world. That's what our community groups want. They want predictability. They want consistency. They want continuity. They want to know. And they talk to our staff, okay, we're practicing Tuesday at four o'clock. We're there at four o'clock. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. We're not going to get bumped. We don't have to worry about having the kids arrive or the players arrive, and then, no, no, sorry, you got bumped. We're going to have to put you somewhere else. Because regardless whether it's another institution, we've got other priorities. Here, the community groups will be given a priority, top priority. And as we said, it's a multi-purpose sports field. Yes, we've heard from the privateers, because they've been bounced all over the place. It's hard for them to get practice time. It's hard for them to recruit players. It's hard for them to promote their sport. And we talk about the promotion of this sport. Do you know that flag football has now become an Olympic sport? And here we are, the city of Charlestown. And hopefully, this will address, this will address the needs for them to have the proper field dimensions, which we don't have in the city, from an ownership perspective. So I'm very enthusiastic about what this resolution has to offer. I'll reiterate, there's going to be an open house, and I want Counselor Beck to know. I've talked to some of the residents too. We had two rallies on North River Road, two rallies, and I was there. We had residents come across the street. We support the project. And I can say that honestly.
Okay.
Honestly. So, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
We're ready to move forward. We want to get this project going. Our staff have done a terrific job. The community groups are ready. Let's get this show on the road.
Yeah, just one thing we can't guarantee is that sometimes teams will be bumped whether we own the property or not. And secondly, we do have a CFL regulations-type field down along with Avenue.
But it's owned by the province, and it was overused and didn't have the proper maintenance.
Okay. Did you want to follow up, or is that good?
No, I have two more questions.
Do you want to, because this is just second time?
I know it is. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So I'm just following Counselor Beck's, you know, points that he brought up tonight around, have we looked into possible funding partnerships, you know, to help support the financial piece? And the parking thing is great if it's not during a school day. At a school day, you're not getting any parking there for sure, because every kid in Brighton that attends my school has their own vehicle. And saying that, I understand that football club is important, but you're right. Colonel Gray's going to be looking for that field for their soccer games. And you're going to have Queen Charlotte looking for their field for their soccer games. And you're going to have the Charlestown Winslow somebody wants to come in because we're having a tournament for their soccer games. So I just want to make sure too that that is, you know, the right space when we're talking about this, and are we going to be able to build it based on what we're projecting? We have the money approved for the turf field, but there's a whole lot of other costs that go into a turf field. And if we haven't done our due diligence, and we're just kind of trying to hurry this along, is that the right decision at this very time?
Just one second, Counselor Twill, just one second. Can I just get, he's been waiting, I know, but can you just, no, he can lump them all up, just?
I'll comment on that.
Good, okay.
That's okay. We haven't heard anything, right? Our due diligence has been done by our professional staff. They put a lot of time and effort into this. So I'm sorry, we haven't heard anything. We've done our due diligence. And I'm confident, I am confident in our staff, that they not only done their job, they've gone beyond the call of duty. And the other thing Counselor Beck talked about, you know, consultations with some of the user groups. As I said at the Parks and Recreation meeting, our staff communicate on a daily basis with all user groups in this city, individually, collectively. They want to come in and make presentations to the committee. They start with staff, then the committee, and then sometimes to council. So you know what? We're a very open book. We're open, transparent, accountable. Our process is extremely open. And like I said, I have the faith, complete faith, in the collaborative approach that our professional staff has with our user groups in this city. In fact, some of our Parks and Recreation staff attend some of the respective groups' annual meetings. They attend their meetings, they hear what they have to say, and they bring it back to the senior administration. So that's ongoing. Mr. Quinn, if I'm wrong, please correct me if I'm wrong. But that goes on all year long. So in terms of consultation, collaboration, communications, whatever you want to call it?
Open book.
We're there. We're there all the time.
So Counselor, could we just ask your manager, just to, you did ask for his opinion. Can he, can you, Frank, can you provide some enlightenment?
So Your Worship, so yes. So there has been, like when you were talking about consultations. So this report was done in 2017. So we did look at sites, and then Simmons was selected as the preferred site. So they did in-depth work on that site. Can this site be, can this field happen there? Yes, it can. What's the estimate of probable cause? We were provided with a cost at that time. I added to that cost because of inflation. So the proposed amount that we put forward is 3.4. We are looking as part of that, looking for partnership funding. So we feel there will be individuals out there, whether it's an actual, you know, individuals that would potentially fund this. It could be a partner of a user group, or maybe it could even be sponsorship of the venue as well. So that is something we're going to be looking at as well to help offset the cost. Like you said, the biggest thing with this location is, any other site, we can look at it as well, but majority of them have other costs associated with them because they'll need to have other infrastructure added. We have the infrastructure right there now at Simmons, and the field will actually complement those, that infrastructure. And then, and you just mentioned also about the user groups. The schools use our field heavily right now, and we work closely with them. All the minor sport groups uses the fields at that location for the most part. It's a very central field, that it's not seen as one club or one sport. It's used by multiple sports. So it's sort of a natural location, to put it as well. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Beck, Counselor McLeire, Counselor Bernard, and then Counselor McKinnon.
Yeah, just a few comments or responses to the comments. I'm going to go back to the six dressing rooms. We're looking at a prolonged use of a field. We're looking at prolonged use of Simmons. If I understand it correctly, there's also a request from the Charlestown Knights Hockey Team to come in and take one of those dressing rooms for next year. So we're potentially looking at reducing those six rooms to five, potentially. Plus, we've got a lot of players on the football team. If you have multiple events going on at the same time, I don't think the dressing room availability is quite to what it is being portrayed here. As far as all people wanting this to be city-owned, that's not the message that I've heard from residents. And this is a Parks and Rec insistence. This is a Chair insistence that has been stated here publicly. That is not what I've heard from my consultation with residents. As far as the review, the position has been clearly stated of city-owned. So going back and reviewing your own information, you're not looking at it through an objective lens. You're going back and reaffirming what you already believe. That has been stated here multiple times. City-owned, city-owned, city-owned. So that lens, to my mind, is not open-minded, when you're not looking at those potential possibilities that may exist out there. So parking, I agree with Counselor McCabe. We can control the schedules in our facilities. We can't control what goes on at schools. We can't control what goes on at Holy Redeemer Church. We can't control what goes on at Spring Park United Church. And it's not our land. So we can't just willy-nilly say, yeah, go park over there. It's not our land. It's not us to say that. As far as an open house, that's an after-the-fact matter. Simmons was designed to replace the old Simmons. It wasn't what do you think about Simmons? It's saying, here's new Simmons. What do you think about our project? This is different. This is a new, totally different concept that has not been there before. Simmons was a replacement of an old facility. And if you're coming in for an open house after the fact, I think that's a little too late. As far as Cornwall goes, my understanding is that was built with the memorandum of agreement with the province. And there's a user agreement that is in place. That has not been explored here. No discussions with the province about what could be looked at with that. None. As far as a capital city, and no project, I mean, we'll get that. We're going to have a field. There's going to be a field in Charlestown. I'm not going to put up a roadblock to build a facility. I just want to make sure it's, and I'm with Counselor McCabe on that. I want it to be in the right spot, and that we've exhausted all our possibilities here. And as far as the residents supporting, the ones that he might be referring to across the street, I did speak to them, and yeah, they did support it. But there's many others that have legitimate concerns about the project. And I think when we're doing these things, we don't look at them in isolation. We look at them in the greater good and the greater number. And I think we have to take those into consideration when we are making our decisions on that. So, that's it. And, oh, yeah, one thing.
One thing.
This is eight years later. One thing, one last thing. Let's look at it through a 2025 lens, not through a 2017 lens. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Twill, do you wish to respond? Do you want to respond, or do you want, well, he has to respond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll read to the other.
You'll want to, can you? Okay. You're going to consolidate them. You're going to consolidate all the questions, okay?
We're going to consolidate. We're going to collaborate, facilitate.
Counsel Bernard, and then Counselor McKinnon. Oh, sorry, Counselor McLeire, you'll go first.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I took the time in the weekend to listen to the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting that was last held on this, to which Counselor Beck was in attendance. Anyway, I've, like probably, you know, asked the council, there's a, you know, a decision we made here. But I'm supporting the resolution, and a lot of it has to do with, regardless of it, you know, there's debate and question about being city-owned. I do see value, I do see value in the city having control of this kind of a site. The teams and the user group, it's not all about the Privateers Football Club. There's all the different sports groups. And from what I understand, I'm listening to the committee meeting, I think Manager Frank mentioned, and I hope this is the case, that in terms of operating and covering expenses, it's maybe possibly to be projected that the revenue can maybe break even on the thing in terms of the operation of it. the revenue can maybe break even on the thing in terms of the operation of it. I see you shaking your head, thank you. And that, the other thing that was mentioned, that you mentioned in that meeting, which to me makes good sense, and I hope it would be an operating principle, if this does happen there, that there'd be maybe a reserve fund created for, for that structure. So going forward, when you get into, you know, things don't last forever, 10 years, turf field probably got to be replaced. Nice to know if you have a reserve fund, boom. So if that's, if, if that's part of what the, you know, your, your goal would be going forward, you know, that would be great. And, and the other thing, the extension, I think, if you could just clarify for me, you said with the, with the turf field, you're upping the hours, you're going from, you're getting, how does that go again? You're getting, you're extending the seasons, but you're, it's like getting how many extra fields or how many hours? Could you just reiterate that for me?
Can I, Mr. Chair?
I'll write it for him. No, just want to.
Yes, Counselor McLeary. So yeah, so a normal field's in the range of 300 to 350. And then this field here, we can get 1,500 to 2,000. And it increases, you can, you don't have to actually, so far on a Saturday, we can have the field used every single Saturday from 8:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m. And not have to worry about overuse. A grass field, you can't do that. You can also have it used in the evening, you could have it used from 5:00 to, to 9:00. And so it's just, you're allowed to, you have, and you still have to do maintenance to it, but it's not the same. You just, you run a fluff earth over to actually till up the turf, and then it helps you to use it, use it more, more often.
And Counselor McLeary, use those reserve funds to pay down debt. Okay, Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, your worship. Just a couple of questions that have come up through discussions here tonight, through the chair. Is there or will there be an MOU with the schools and their usage? And what is the commitment that we will be giving the schools to use the facility? And has there, schools are worried, right, right now, they're losing priority of the use. So they just want to know what they are going to be allowed to do. And has there been, or will there be, any communications with the schools for use of the field?
Yeah. Can, do you want to just consolidate them, or you want to answer that right now, Frank?
So yes, Counselor McKinnon. So yeah, so the, the schools, we did receive word from one of the schools saying that they wanted to use the field, of course, like they have been. And they will still continue to be a priority. You can't be neighbors to, to big schools and not have, and they don't have any of their own sport fields. So they will, they will continue to use the field. And this will allow actually them to use it even more, that they can use it during the day, when there's no minor sport groups going, because they're in school, the actual schools can use the turf field.
Will that be?
Right now, we don't have an agreement with any of the schools. They just use their fields and have been for the last 25 years that I've been working for the city, and I'm sure they were using it before that. And then we also use their fields as well. And there's really no formal agreement. We've never been able to come to sort of that agreement, but it's something we could look at for sure, so the guaranteed access to the field.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. Clock says a minute left, though.
What's that?
Clock says a minute left to speak, so hopefully, hopefully that will re-trigger. Anyway, I'm kind of a little surprised at some of the, some of the questions here. The Simmons field has been used for years. I've never, ever heard of a parking issue. We're replacing it with turf. But for the most part, the same schedule will still, will still be intact. Only, only we'll be able to use it more after, because you'll have lights, and it's a turf field, and you can use it into the night. But as far as parking, I've never heard of an issue with, with parking. And I, I can't see why there would be. The other thing is, you know, when I agreed as other elected officials here to take the Simmons name off the turf field, to review and look at other, other locations and make sure that we were picking the proper location, that's why I agreed to it. And not only was it recommended in Simmons in 2017, but then we went out again, we got consultants again to review all the other locations. And that's in front of you here. Simmons again rose to the top. And there's reasons in every field here why, why it wasn't going to work there, why it would work best for Simmons. So for me, we still need another turf field. I mean, this turf field is going to have, we've been behind in rugby, soccer, field hockey, football. We've been behind in a lot of field sports. And that was one of the reasons we jumped on this, was to be able, and this is just getting us some more time, not enough. So I agree with the location. And I mean, it's been recommended by our professionals. They've done a lot of work here. The consultants have done a lot of work. I don't know who are we to argue. But there's still opportunity for another turf field. And I, you know, I, as a city, I'd be looking, I see there was a presentation came from Holland College, I think everybody's emailed today.
Yeah.
So to me, I wouldn't rule that out. If there's another opportunity that works for the city, I would be definitely looking into it. But for this one, this, this makes a lot of sense to me, and I'd be supporting it. Thank you.
Counselor Twill, do you want to respond? The mic's yours.
Question.
Oh, question's called.
Question's called.
Can I say one more? I just want to, I know, I want to support it if there's an MOA, MOU. That's what I want to know.
Frank, will there be talks with the, well, as you said, it's right in the middle of, what, two high schools, junior, senior, and Counselor Twill's at five schools, but.
It is, but I just want to, for me, it's important.
Correct, it is an operational, operational issue, but we will be interacting, user, usership agreements with everyone that uses the field, so that we have, it is a turf field, so it's different than a grass field, so we will be insisting on that, that the schools will indicate how much time they need to use it, and we'll go from there. And, and potentially the province could be a potential funder too, if they want to have the school have.
Yeah, just as Counselor McKinnon, or Counselor Bernard said, there's a lot of potential for another field. And I'd say out in Heather Avenue there, Ward 6. I don't know if the coun, I don't know if the counselor was listening, but anyway, say.
Is that Ward 6?
Oh, it isn't? Ward, is that Ward, Ward 8 or Ward 9?
Anyway.
Question's called?
Called.
All those in favor? All those against? Eight, one. Okay, that's the end for the report? Okay. Next report, I think I see Mr. David Gundry. And I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to give her a report. Thank you, deputy.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening, everybody. So Affordable Housing Advisory Committee did not meet since our last regular meeting. Design Review did not meet as well since our last meeting. Heritage Board met on March 27th. The Planning and Heritage Committee met on April 1st. The Planning Board met on April 1st. All the information is in your package, minutes and reports, et cetera. You'll also notice at the end of the report, all your updated permits and approvals that have happened since our last monthly meeting of council. We have three resolutions for your consideration this evening, as well as one second reading. And I just have a couple of highlights to share with you all. The first would be that we have began our meetings and discussions and public consultation, et cetera, on our City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw. We, we've been meeting with our consultants, Fathom Studio. They kicked off a preliminary engagement this week with an open house at the library. They've met with many stakeholders. We're also having an educational session tomorrow evening with council. And there's a public survey that will be launched. And from there, there'll be many more opportunities for the public to be engaged on, as we embark on this zoning and development bylaw. I also want to point out that since we passed our operational and capital budget, we are now able to proceed with moving forward on our recruitment for a building official, to reduce permit approval timelines and expedite housing, housing construction. So that's great. The other thing I just wanted to bring up is our Park Street update. Recently, council supported staff's recommendation and planning board's recommendation. And I just wanted to let everyone know that the province's decision to designate this special planning area on Park Street effectively superseding the municipal planning authority, the city has requested a legal review to better understand our available options and the potential implications. And it's my understanding that staff did, we did receive towards the end of the day today, a legal review on this from the legal counsel for the city. And they have not yet had the opportunity to brief council on that. So that will certainly be coming forward at a future council meeting. And I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, as, as the City of Charlottetown, you know, we continue to be willing to work collaboratively with the province to explore alternative locations, both to serve the needs of the broader goals, building a stronger, healthy community for all the residents of the City of Charlottetown. So other than that, three resolutions for your consideration, and a second reading. And any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Just a quick follow-up, Madam Chair.
You told me to read that.
I did call Counselor Bruce McDougall, who's our president of the FPEIM, because he reached out to mediate. Anyways, he didn't get back to me. I think he's out of the country, but I will follow up. Counselor Twill, Counselor Matar, and Counselor McKinnon.
So, thank you for your report, Deputy Mayor. So my understanding that we're going to be seeking a legal challenge against the province of Prince Edward Island, is that? You said you're asking the legal people what to review our options, or, or are we going ahead, seeking a legal challenge? If you could just clarify that for me first, please.
Thank you, Counselor Twill. And what staff have done is they requested from the City of Charlottetown's legal, just to ensure that proper process was followed in terms of the province's decision to designate a special planning area on Park Street. What that legal opinion will, will read is unbeknownst to any of us yet, because we haven't seen it. So it's my understanding it was more so to seek clarity on this, because it's not something that happens very often. But I will ask Director Mike or Manager David if they want to add to that, to ensure that council's getting the right information this evening, as this was an operational part of the.
Thank you, deputy. Mr. Russ.
Thank you, your worship. And through the chair, that's correct, staff, after the decision was made by the province to designate the property as a special planning area, reached out to our legal counsel for an opinion on, you know, what those implications are, so that we can better inform council on what your options may be if you wanted to take a closer look at it.
Okay. Counselor Matar.
Thank you, your worship. So I guess my questions, it wasn't quick enough to the mic, but they were, they were addressed, but I think it's important for me to raise again anyways. So as you all know, two weeks ago tonight, we, council, we voted in favor of planning board's decision to not recommend the rezoning of 15 Park Streets. And to the disappointment of the process, and likely to the planning staff, and most definitely to the residents in the area of influence, the provincial government has decided to overturn that decision and continue to operate there. So as the, as the counselor for the ward, you know, I've certainly received a lot of questions and requests in regard to, what does this really mean? Where do we go from here? What's next? So I intended to seek those answers here this evening, and some of that was addressed already. But I think in fairness to the residents of the area, they need to, we need to communicate and have an understanding of where, where this is going. And if it, and ultimately, if at the end of the day, it is staying where it is, and that's what's going to happen, there's still a lot of uncertainty as to even how it's going to continue to operate. We've been operating the last couple of years on a, on a temporary variance, which had terms and conditions attached to that. There was also some other checks and balances that were agreed upon. There was additional policing, there were patrols, there was garbage pickup, there was other. So at this point in time, you know, after our decision was made, and a couple of days shortly thereafter, when the minister made the announcement that Park Street was staying, we've essentially, it's gone crickets. We haven't really, we haven't heard anything. So, and then in, in the media, I think we had Bruce Donaldson, is it Bruce? Bruce?
Bruce McDougall, Counselor Bruce McDougall. He's the president of FPEIM.
President announced that he would be willing to facilitate or mediate some type of discussion. So I'm not sure where that came from and why he put that out there, and who's initiating that discussion to mediate that. Thank you to Deputy Mayor for the updates in regards to any potential legal action the city may wish to take, or any type of appeal process that might be available to the city from a planning perspective. Because certainly, planning, the professional staff here made a decision based on planning principles and the land use of that particular area. And that was overturned, as we know. So I think we owe it to the residents of that area, and in the city as a whole, for those who are concerned, to determine where we're going from here. So I do appreciate that there are some updates here, and I look forward to further updates. And if they can be provided, and we can be open and transparent about that to the residents of Charlottetown, and especially in that area of influence. So thank you very much.
Deputy.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Counselor Matar, for your questions. To date, we've not heard any more from our provincial representatives, or anyone from the province, nor the staff, nor the CAO, or, speaking for myself, from any council. What I can say is that the city staff followed process and procedure like they do with any applicant that applies for anything through the Planning and Heritage Department. So this application is no different than any other application. It was about land use and community impact. And as we hear in real-time updates from the city staff, the, the city staff will update council in that real time. So thank you.
Okay, do you want to read the, oh, Counselor Twill, second one, okay, second question to the reporter.
I think it's also important to note that when the decision was made by the province to overturn the decision by city council, the issue was brought up on the floor of the Legislative Assembly, and there was an exchange. And, you know, you have the premier saying one thing about discussions with, with, with city officials. And the minister as well, you know, in the letter that he sent to city council, no, I'm sorry, he sent to the mayor. And I managed to get my hands on a copy of that at that meeting when we took the vote. I read out the second paragraph. So, you know, if we're going to be doing a review, I think we need to review everything, okay? We have to understand the logic and rationale, why the province are making the decision that they're making. And it's not the first time that they've overturned a municipality. They've done this before. So once again, precedent has already been set. So the last thing I want to do is give the residents a false sense of security, that we're looking at this mechanism, that mechanism. I, I don't know if it's a fait accompli, but there were discussions that took place between the city and the province. We've never received minutes of those meetings. We've never received information from those meetings. And you're in a cave without a lantern, trying to find, how do I get out of this cave? Trying to understand everything. So I think we need to do a review of what, what had taken place there. Maybe we need to have an independent review, because somewhere along the line, folks, the provincial government thought the light was green. They thought the light was green, filled out the application, there's no problems down there. Green, green, green. Well, the light wasn't green. It wasn't green, in fact, it was red. It was red because of the enormous amount of meetings that we had with the community. Just ask the counselor for the ward. Community meetings that, that the community organized. Council entertained. We've had several meetings. So I don't know where the idea would come from, that everything is copacetic down at Park and Beach and the surrounding area of influence. Why would anyone get that idea that everything was fine, when, when it wasn't fine? So, you know, we, we need to, we need that information too, because the residents deserve to have that information. I can tell you, I've talked to some of the residents too, and they're pretty dejected, that faith in their counselor, their council did the right thing by voting, voting that down, taking the recommendation from our senior staff, which did an admirable job. It wasn't easy for our staff to write a report and make a recommendation. That's hard. That's really hard. Very difficult. But you know what? Nonetheless, they stepped up to the plate.
Do you want to wrap it up there, Counselor Twill? She's got an answer. Do you want to wrap it up?
I'll wrap it up. So, so Mr. Mayor, there's a lot of information that this council, and the majority of the council, maybe some, some in the inside have it. I have no idea. But you know what, sir? We're not getting all the information as a council. We're not getting all the information. When the premier, just let me finish, when the premier and the minister stand. When the premier and the minister stand up and make those declarations, those are hard hitting declarations.
Fact is, resolution was passed on March 25th, A2, from a professional planners that said this was not permissible use. That's the story. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Twill, for your comments and your questions and concerns. I'm sure we all, you know, are, you know, perplexed over the, some of the comments that were made. But the premier of the day spent two terms on City Council, and he's well aware of the process. And at the end of the day, it's council's decision, and the council voted A2. And that's the process. It's always been, and it always will be. So, where anyone would get an idea that this was, this was something that was going to happen before it went through a process, is, in my opinion, absolutely ridiculous.
Yeah. We can't guarantee outcomes. Do you want to read that first resolution?
Your Worship, Planning and Heritage Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Lanna Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the following minor variance for the subject property currently addressed as 166 Royalty Road, PID number 388694 be denied. A reduced minimum lot area for an interior lot in the R2S zone of 323 square meters, 3,485 square feet per unit of a semi-detached dwelling on the subject property, whereas a minimum lot area of 348 square meters, or 3,745 and 70 square feet, is otherwise required per unit of a semi-detached dwelling in the R2S zone.
No, I have Counselor McKinnon, and I have Counselor Duran. Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm agreeing with staff, or the recommendation, or the committee, that Planning and Heritage Committee that have voted to deny this variance. There's various reasons here listed out. I've had lots of phone calls, emails, concerns regarding this, where the lot size is, if you look at the map on 106, I know the public can't see this, but what they've tried to subdivide off of this, the lots would be shallower than the rest of the lots on Essex Street. Each lot would be smaller in size by, I think, 25 square meters, approximately 8% as per the manager of Planning. They want to put six units in there. Parking will be, I would say, a nightmare, because right across the street from the driveways is going to be a roadway going in behind the property there, off of Essex. Vehicles parked on the road. It's already a very busy road. There's no, there's no sidewalk on this road for pedestrians to walk on, so. I do have a question, I guess, for the planner, for the Chair. If this is denied, if this resolution does get denied, will they be able to come back and divide it into two instead of three?
Deputy?
Thank you. So, usually, if it's denied, then it's one year before a new application comes in. But as David pointed out before, if an application comes in, and it meets the criteria of being completely different than the first application, it is my understanding that there is room for that. I'm going to ask David if he could further explain that for us, if you don't mind.
Through the Chair, to Counselor McKinnon, to answer that question, if this is turned down by council tonight, the applicants could be free to apply to subdivide the parcel into two lots. You would have two lots which could, as of rate, permit either a single detached dwelling or a semi-detached dwelling on each lot, because there would be sufficient lot size, as well as meeting all the other regulations of the bylaw to do so. And that application for subdivision would be deemed completely different. This is a minor variance application to allow subdivision to occur. If they applied for an as-of-rate subdivision that would allow for as-of-rate development through the R2S, we couldn't deny them approval in that case, so.
Counselor McKinnon? Good. All right. Counselor Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you for your explanation, Mr. Gundrum. I look at this, and it says, this is for a minor variance. We give minor variances and major variances all the time. In a minor variance, you're allowed up to 10% and still be a minor variance in land usage. This came in at lower than 10%. It's actually 8%. Now, we have the backgrounder from our manager, who is a very professional man, knows planning, you know, he references official plans, our bylaw. He really goes above and beyond of explaining all the concerns that the residents had, one for traffic. So, you're looking to get a minor variance for three duplexes, which is six cars, maybe 12, depending on who buys it. So, six cars on a street is not a major concern. You know, he explains throughout his report that this meets all the requirements necessary. So, it gets back to the Planning Board. You know, the elected officials are on the Planning Board. They get to hear what's coming each and every day, and they know the circumstances. If they deny it, this could be appealed to Iрак. Now, Planning Board members are politically appointed. They come and they go. I don't know if they fully understand what happens when you deny an application, you know, especially when it goes to Iрак. The process would be, the manager would have to go with our legal team and prepare for a day or two to defend these decisions. You know, all this stuff is outlined by our manager, why it should be approved. Pretty near every time we come to a council meeting, we are told that the City of Charlestown is in a housing crisis. So, this would be a way to contribute to the housing crisis and get more housing with a minor variance. They're not looking to rezone, they're not looking for anything, just a minor variance. I just can't understand how a Planning Board can go against, you know, a 7-2 vote, to completely go against the training, the expertise, and the experience of our manager. And then it comes to council, and you think, well, it's 7-2, you know, something must be wrong, we'll deny it. But I caution the council to, please, don't just, you know, push this aside, because the manager has fulfilled his obligations. He referenced numerous points that this should go ahead. So, I certainly won't be supporting the resolution to deny it. And I caution council that if we do deny it, we could be setting ourselves up for a costly failure here. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor McLeary? No, Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Counselor Duran, I appreciate your comments that, yes, I don't disagree that Manager David Gundrum did a lot of work on this file, but council doesn't always go with what has been sent to us by the manager of any department. So, we can go with, we can vote against, and the same is what happened with the Planning and Heritage Committee. I'm not here to argue with you, I'm just stating that we don't always agree or disagree with what they're saying. If you look at Essex Street, the top end of Essex Street, what was believed to be a single-family neighborhood is all duplexes up there. There is more than two vehicles per unit on that street. It's a snowplowing, it's a nightmare for the snowplow operator in the wintertime. Summertime, they're parked in the yards, they're parked in the streets. So, I'm not naive to think that each unit's going to have two cars, none parked on the street, where there's no sidewalks and people going through there. I'm sure we're all aware as well, yes, we, they can appeal to Iрак, but I think we have grounds that's in the report as well that will defend us. Thank you.
Counselor Duran, second time.
Did the Chair want to respond first? Is that what?
Do you want to go, Chair? Do you want to wait for him?
Sure. Thank you, and Counselor Duran, Counselor McKinnon, or Counselor, anybody, just to kind of wrap up in terms of as Chair, there are many, many occasions when planning staff and Planning Board don't always align. That's why we have a Planning Board. Planning Board is very different than some of these other boards. It's part of the Planning Act. It's something we have to have. So, that's why we're here tonight. It's, at the end of the day, it's council's decision. Planning Board had a lot of discussion on this, and they had a lot of questions for the planning staff, and still, the majority of the Planning Board did not support staff's recommendation. So, we're here this evening with Planning Board saying not recommending, planning staff recommending it. So, at the end of the day, it's council's decision, and it's also the applicant's prerogative, should they decide to appeal. And they have, they 100% perfectly have the right to appeal any decisions made tonight.
Counselor Duran?
Thank you, and thank you for your explanation, but I go back to the planning manager. This is his file. And with respect to drainage, parking, lot depth, future development of the proposed lots, they have to conform to everything, setback requirements in the R2S zone as further relief from zoning, no further relief from zoning. It hasn't been, they're not asking to rezone. It's not rocket science. I see us in the downtown core here, we give minor or major variances to just about on the property line. This is a minor variance of 8%. This is not going to affect, you know, speed on the street. You referenced up the street, and I've driven through that area as well. I know that's more congested. I also say, when we have a development agreement, or someone comes in with a new development, it changes time and time and time again. I'll reference the Towers Road developments, St. Martha's developments, Mr. Banks development. Every time we come to a meeting, they change it, and that's their prerogative. That's what new developments are for. But this, this is not a change of zoning. It's a minor variance. Like I said, housing crisis meets all the requirements as set out from our manager. So, I don't think that we can just push this aside and say, okay, we'll go with Planning Board. I caution the council, and, you know, I'm just saying, my vote will be for the manager and the staff to move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
To favor, to deny.
It's right here, dwelling in the zone to deny the variance. Okay. One, two, three, four. Okay. All those against? Eight, one. Okay. Do you have another resolution?
Second resolution from Planning and Heritage, Your Worship, is moved by Deputy Mayor Lanna Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that council approved the request to proceed to public consultation to consider the density revision from seven to eight units to lot 2019-1 St. Martha's Court, PID 1119726, of the development concept plan, which was approved by council on November 13th, 2018, and to accept the working site and building plans for lot 2019-1.
Okay. All those in favor, please? All those against? Nine, zero. Okay.
Third resolution, Your Worship, from Planning and Heritage, is moved by Deputy Mayor Lanna Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that council approved the request to proceed to public consultation for the request to amend Appendix A of the future land use map of the City of Charlestown from medium-density residential to institutional, low-density residential, to institutional and low-density residential, to medium-density residential, and a request to amend Appendix G zoning map of the Charlestown zoning and development bylaw from medium-density mixed-use residential, MUR, to institutional, I, from low-density residential, R2, to institutional, I, and from low-density residential, single, R2S, to medium-density mixed-use residential, MUR, for portions of the properties identified as PID numbers 1100528 and 193284, having frontage on McWilliams Road.
Okay. You should get a drink of water. Question? Questions called?
Can I see that motion on Martha's Court?
Counselor Beck, you going to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Any against?
He's got it already.
Nine, zero.
Can I see that Martha's Court resolution just for a minute?
Which one? Oh, yes. Okay. Reading?
We have a reading, Your Worship, related to zoning and development bylaw. To adopt a bylaw, PHZD 2088, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from the low-density residential, R2, zone to medium-density residential, R3, zone for the property located at 7 McKinnon Road, PID number 374215, whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, PHZD 202088, as it pertains to 7 McKinnon Road, PID number 374215, as attached, was read and approved a first time on March 11th, 2025.
Shall I carry? Okay. Shall I carry?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay. Eight, one. Okay. Is that it for the, I think, Counselor Beck, you have a point of order?
Yeah, just, I just noticed on the.
Second resolution?
On the second resolution, it said in here in the package, and I just saw it here again on this, that the motion is to proceed to public consultation, but we're approving the project, right? We've already had the public consultation. Just the wording on here, it says, on this motion, says to approve to public consultation. And it said that in the package, too.
That's number two.
Yeah, so it's just the one we just passed, because we already had the public consultation on that. And so, we approved the, no, we already did it. There was.
Okay. David, can you clarify that? Or, I think there's a little mix-up here. Go ahead.
Yeah, through the Chair, that's correct. That's an error. Clericler on our part, it should be to approve the updated concept.
So, instead of going to public consultation, it is?
It should say, it should say to approve the development. Because we already, we already did the public.
Just put a friendly amendment to it.
So, do I do that now?
Yeah, do it now.
Okay. So, just make a friendly amendment to Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Two, that council approved the request to, or council approved the request to consider the density and remove proceed to public consultation from that.
Okay. So, it has to be moved by the deputy? Okay, all right. Counselor McCabe, good. To allow the friendly amendment?
I guess that was just for clarification. Didn't we not approve that at Planning Board to go to public consultation, too, and have discussion about how that was so silly? Sorry, I can't remember. Go ahead.
Oh, just one second, sorry.
You'll see in the report that staff's recommendation from the meeting that we just had was for, that the Planning and Heritage Department recommend Planning Board to recommend to council to approve the density revisions from seven to eight. There's no proceeding to public consultation in this recommendation, because this is the updated one. We already did that. Yep. So, the recommendation in the report is correct. I think that we might have just did a copy-paste on the resolution from the first one, and it was just missed. And, yep.
Okay. Do you want to read it again? We're going to read it again.
The perils of copy and paste, Your Worship.
That's all right. That's technology, beauty of technology, and something to watch for.
So, the updated resolution, Your Worship, and thank you, Counselor, good catch, that council approved the density revision from seven to eight units to lot 2019-1 St. Martha's Court. Court PID number 1119726 of the Development Concept Plan, which was approved by Council on November 13th, 2018, and to accept the working site and building plans for lot 2019-1.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, nine, zero. All against? No. Okay, good. Okay, that's it. Thank you, Deputy. Thank you very much. Environment and Sustainability, six, is that what we're at now? Counselor McKinnon? You're up.
Thank you, Your Worship. Environment and Sustainability Committee met on March 26th. Meeting minutes are included in your package. Tonight, there's three resolutions for your consideration. There's two amended bylaws for your consideration, Cosmetic Pesticide Bylaw and the two amended Tree Protection Bylaw as well. I'd like to offer a couple of notes before we open it up to any questions the Council may have. First, the city has secured $365,000 in funding from FCM, Growing Canada's Community Canopies Program. Funds for these projects running three years starting this year, planting over 1,200 trees and shrubs in Windsor Park, Hermitage Creek, Ellen's Creek, and around Andrews Pond. Funds will also support managing invasive species and downed trees in the project areas. There's only a couple of days left to provide input in the city's active transportation plan. Survey is live on charlottownhall.ca until April the 10th. Transit rides have been up over 4% from last March, with over 130,000 transit riders this past March. And finally, tonight, the city's climate action plan will be presented this evening for adoption. There's been extensive community and collaborator engagement conducted for its development. This plan will guide the city in adapting to the impacts of climate change, as well as reducing greenhouse gases over the next five years. So that's my report. If there's any questions, feel free to ask. Manager Jessica and Katrina is here as well. Thank you.
So in terms of presentation of the climate action, is that Katrina going to present that, and Jessica is, are you just sort of going to wait here for questions? What's your? I know, no, just, I just...
Thank you, Mayor Brown. We weren't prepared to give a presentation, but are here for questions.
Yeah, yeah. Good. You saw the action plan? Okay. Okay, first resolution. Oh, question by Counselor Durand.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Counselor McKinnon. I'm just wondering, with all these trees, 1,200 trees, you know, they're going to various places that there are a lot of trees. I'm just wondering, would any consideration be given to put them around our well field protection? We always need trees there to filter out our water systems. I'm just wondering if we could look at the possibility of giving a certain percentage around our well fields. Thank you.
Counselor McKinnon?
Counselor Durand, for your question. I'll take a stab at it, but I'll hand it over to Jessica. I'm assuming that part of the application process, to get this funding, that they would have had site specifics put in place, but I'll ask Manager Jessica. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Counselor Durand. And I think Alistair on our team's been doing a lot of work to increase tree canopy cover at the well field sites, and recently worked with consultants to develop reforestation plans. So there's plans in the works to increase tree cover there for this project, it's site specific, but we're doing above and beyond tree planting, beyond what this project's funding, so we can definitely look into trees at the well field sites.
Questions called? Questions called? We got a couple of people out. Can we just wait for a sec? Yeah, no, just one sec. Just call on the Deputy there. She's coming? Okay. Just going to vote on these three resolutions. The three? Three resolutions, yeah. Oh, okay. Okay.
Environment and Sustainability Resolution Number One, Your Worship, moved by Counselor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor Norman Beck. Be it resolved that Council endorses an application to FCM's climate-ready plans and processes fund to support natural asset management, and that Council commit $30,000 of pre-approved funds from the Environment and Sustainability Department's 2025-2026 operating budget as 30% matching funds for this application, and that Mayor and Cao are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor? Okay. Against? No. Go ahead.
Environment and Sustainability, Second Resolution, moved by Counselor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor Norman Beck. Be it resolved that Council adopt the climate action plan and direct staff across the municipality to undertake its implementation, and that Mayor and Cao are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor? Against? No. Good. Next one?
The Third Resolution, Your Worship, from Environment and Sustainability, is moved by Counselor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor Norman Beck. Be it resolved that Council approve the RFQ 2025-004 and the purchase of Spring Street and Park Trees from Cool Breeze Farms Limited in the amount of $44,892 plus taxes, and that Council approve the RFQ 2025-000 and the purchase of trees for spring natural area restoration from Dutch Master Nurseries Limited in the amount of $39,331 plus taxes, and that Mayor and Cao are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor? Counselor Durand?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I just have a concern about the price. You know, I guess they're, they're looked at, looked at all the different people that are given their tenders, and sustainability score is lower, that puts a lower price on the tender. Can someone clarify that? Like, alls we want is trees. What does a lower sustainability score entitle? Are they not healthy trees, or what? What is the description of that? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Durand. I asked the same question at the committee meeting, and I think it was Simon that gave the response, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Manager Jessica, but it was how, I think it's sustainability and the usage of how their trees are harvested, grown, transported. I think it's the sustainability of that part, and I'll leave it up to you, Jessica.
Sure. Through you, Mayor Brown. Yes, it's what Counselor McKinnon said, in addition to anything else that he might want to point out about their operations. So in our procurements, we sometimes award a certain percentage to sustainability around. It could be local workforce, and training, and equity, and social considerations, but also transportation and environmentally friendly practices. So we would ask the question for them to outline to us their sustainability kind of operations, and then based on how they respond, we would score it accordingly. So 90%, as you can see from that table, 90% is cost and product, and only 10% is based on that response. So the cost that you see isn't 100%. We don't just take the lowest score, but it's factored in with the products that they can supply.
Go ahead.
Counselor McKinnon and our manager. And when I look at it, it does say, like, one time, they get an eight, eight points for sustainability, I guess. They, what am I looking at? Total points where they lost, you know, it's the same company, right? It's the same company that wins one and loses one. Why is it different? You know, the price, I just can't understand, okay? They're good enough to win this one, but they lose that one. And I just don't understand that. Thank you.
Counselor Durand?
Thank you, Counselor Durand, for your question. I think if I understand correctly, they are separate companies. We got Cool Breeze, and we have Dutch Master, with the percentage of scores, so order fulfillment. So in the second one, Cool Breeze might not have had the species that were required for that second tender. So that's where, they're really, really close. Like, we're within a couple of thousand dollars here on each one, as you can see, but with the cost score, which is 90% of it, if you can't fulfill the species that are required, you're going to get the less points. So if you want to add in there, if you, go ahead, Manager.
Through you, Mayor Brown. That's correct. So you'll see that the sustainability scores are the same, but the cost and order fulfillment scores are different, because they're different orders. So they might not have the quantities, they might not have the species, they might not have the right size. So two different orders. One's a certain size and species of trees, and one's, the other one's different. So they're scored based on what they're able to supply.
Question? Questions called? All those in favor? All those against? Eight, one. Okay, and then you have two readings?
Your Worship, there is a Cosmetic Pesticide Bylaw Amendment, Bylaw. Amend the City of Charlottetown's Cosmetic Pesticides Bylaw to reflect recommended amendments cited in the Enforcement Amendment Bylaw 2024 EA01, to include reference to the City's Enforcement Summary Proceedings Bylaw 2024 ESP01. Assign Bylaw Number 2025 CP01, reference the Municipal Government Act, add revised definitions, format bylaw using the appropriate bylaw template, correct minor typographical errors, and to ensure overall consistency throughout the bylaw. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown Cosmetic Pesticides Bylaw be read a second time, and that the said bylaw now be approved and adopted.
Shall it pass? Okay, nine, zero. Next one?
The City of Charlottetown Tree Protection Bylaw Amendment Bylaw 2019 TP01D. Amend the City of Charlottetown's Tree Protection Bylaw to reflect recommended amendments cited in the Enforcement amended Bylaw 2024 EA01, to include reference to the City's Enforcement and Summary Proceedings Bylaw 2024 ESP01, correct formatting, typographical errors, and to ensure overall consistency throughout the bylaw. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown Tree Protection Bylaw be read a second time, and that the said bylaw now be approved and adopted.
Shall it pass? Pass. Okay. Counselor McKinnon, I just wanted to go back to the Climate Action Report. I know we'll have discussions at our committee level, but the one that I saw here was on page 65 of the report. Just want a clarification on it. It says percent public transit module share, and the associated target is to achieve 10% modal, is it modal? Share by public transit by 20... 65. That's, no, that's in the supplementary report. It's in the one drive. I'll bring it up at the committee, but I just wanted to get it on public record. So achieve 10% modal share by public transit by 2035, and 15% by 2045. Does that mean that the city will, like, I'm just trying to clarify that. What does that 10, 15% mean? Mr. Chair, maybe you know.
So the modal share refers to the percentage of trips taking place in the city by that mode. So essentially, it's looking to increase the amount of people using that type of transportation.
10% by 2035, and 15% by 2045.
Yeah, so if you think about, like, the breakdown of the ways that people are getting where they want to go.
Okay.
That percentage.
Okay. And will we assign someone, Mr. Chair, to make sure that we're meeting these targets? Or how do we, we just put them up on a big whiteboard and check the box off as we go through?
So as another action within the Climate Action Plan, it directs to create a reporting framework, to report on all of the targets and the KPIs that are identified within the Climate Action Plan, that being one of them. So it will be reported on. I can't speak to this as well as Anna Keenan would be able to if she were here, but I know for that particular one, we rely on some external information, so I don't think we'll be able to update that one every year. Jessica may know more, too, but as information's available, we will.
No. I'll, Jessica, if you want to.
Sure, I was just going to add one thing, which is, so modal share is something that's currently monitored, so we know X number of percent of people travel by bus in Charlottetown versus personal car versus walking. And so we'll monitor those trends. Hopefully, as we expand transit, improve our AT infrastructure and whatnot, we'll see those percentages go up. That's the goal of, it relates to a bunch of actions around expanding AT and expanding transit. We should see those modal shares go up. Less people in personal vehicles.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. Next report, I believe, is Public Works. You're presenting?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Brown. Counselor Ramsey asked me to fill in his shoes for tonight, and the Public Works Committee met on Wednesday, March 26, 2025, and the draft minutes and the copy of the March Operational Report are included in your package. There's one resolution for your consideration. It required and received approval from the Finance Committee on Wednesday, April 2nd. And the second reading to amend the War Memorial Monument Bylaw is also attached. I'd like to also thank our outgoing intern manager, Paul Johnson, who stepped in in the last few months and did a great job, and welcome back our new manager, Eber here. Everybody knows him, and I'm sure he'll do a great job moving forward. If anybody has any questions on the Public Works Committee and anything in the package, I'll try to answer them as best I can. Thank you.
Welcome back, Albert. Thank you, Paul, very much. Any questions? Counselor Twill from Word Four. Oh, you want to go first? You go first. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. I guess I'll direct this to the intern chair. So just in reviewing the reports, you know, I couldn't help but, you know, just think about, in my two-and-a-half-year timeframe here, we've seen a number of situations around procurement of vehicles, and some situations with, you know, how we're procuring, and whether a mistake was made, or this was made, and here we are finding ourselves where we went out for three, I think it was, went out to three vehicles, and then added on an additional one through an addendum to the tender. So although I agree that the procurement process was followed, and that the notification was put on the website, however, potential vendors are not made aware of that through any communication to, from the city's management. Is that correct, Chair?
Thank you for that, and I have questions about that as well. There's, I don't know if there's a misprint here or not, but we went out for 13, did we not?
Shouldn't we wait until this resolution? Yeah.
But it's in the report, though, too. So I'm sorry, I was bringing it from the report, because it's in the report from the last meeting. You can wait till the resolution.
I would suggest we wait for the resolution for that, but if you have any other questions outside of the resolution on the report...
Okay, well, it was in the report, so I'll wait till the resolution as well.
Okay. So before CAO Frazier reads the resolution, are there any more questions on the actual report? Yes, Counselor Twill, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd just like you to take under advisement, if the department could look at Gerald Street from University Avenue, right up to Laphthorn Avenue, it's in terrible disrepair. There's many, many potholes. Residents have been requesting some progress in terms of pulverization and paving, so please take that under advisement, Gerald Street. Thank you. Ready to go?
Your Worship, I, too, would like to welcome Albert Gashi on board as our newly-minted Public Works Manager in day two in the job. It's good to have you back in the fold, Albert, in this new capacity, and I, too, want to acknowledge Paul Johnson, who is always stepping in when needed, regardless of the call, and does it without complaint, and does a fabulous job. So thanks again, Paul, for... So the resolution, your worship, from Public Works is moved by Counselor John McElair, seconded by Counselor Bob Dran. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for 2024, 2025 half-ton crew cab four-by-four work trucks, the submission from Somerside Chrysler Dodge for thirteen vehicles in the amount of sixty-two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars each, plus all applicable taxes, for a total of eight-hundred-and-ten thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, plus all applicable taxes, be accepted and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counselor Burtard.
Okay, great. Thank you, your worship. So I'll try this again now that we're under the resolution. So I guess going back to my comment about, you know, we continually seem to find ourselves into these procurement issues around vehicles, and it's impacting a number of local businesses within Charlestown and also, you know, awarding these to... I think Somerside was the successful proponent in this one. You know, the thing that I'm struggling with here is how the procurement of this goes. When the addendum was made, it's posted on the website but not necessarily made public to those who potentially. And I know to Paul, you know, you indicated in the report that, you know, that is on the particular vendors to go check the website regularly to ensure that if any updates are made to that, that they catch those and put those forward. You know, and I get that. If that's the process, that's the process. But, you know, this is a substantial increase in vehicles. There's some contradiction here because it was talking about three to thirteen, so it would be sixteen, but now it's thirteen in the resolution. So nonetheless, it's increasing by ten to thirteen vehicles from the original, if I understand correctly, the original RFP or tender was for three vehicles.
That's right.
And then we piggybacked on for the other departments, say, let's put ten more, thirteen more in there. And then we find ourselves with Somerside being the only successful proponent that submitted because the others, I suspect, missed that. So missed a huge opportunity to the tune of eight-hundred-some thousand dollars. You know, and that... I struggle with that. I see we keep getting ourselves into this situation, especially with these vehicles. It was the police vehicles at one time. It was another dealership had an issue. Like, what are we... Like, what... I guess what message are we keep sending out to the community or what we're doing to our local businesses, and we can't get this procurement right? And again, the saying goes, well, it's gonna go back to we need a procurement bylaw. I don't know how many more times we gotta keep saying we need a procurement bylaw to strengthen these practices that we have, so we're not finding ourselves in here. Like, how many more situations need to occur before we get there? You know, I'm struggling whether or not to support this or not based on just purely it's not right or based on the fact that, you know, there is a process in place, albeit it's go to the website and check, and if you don't do that, that's on you. I guess that's in fairness to everybody who goes and checks it. So that's what I'm kind of struggling with in the sense of there is a process in place. Might not be the greatest process, but it's causing problems like this. And I have to assume that the other dealerships in Charlestown may have contacted the city operations and said, you know, what gives here? Like, you know, we missed this, and we missed an opportunity for thirteen vehicles as opposed to three, because I think we did receive two other submissions up to a certain date. Is that correct, Chair?
We're qualified. Go ahead there, Counselor.
But they didn't have the three in it.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing this forward. We had a long discussion on this at the committee meeting, and we brought all these points up. And I wasn't clear if we went out for three in water and sewer first, and then we changed them. We went out with one, then we were gonna put three into that, and then we decided not to do that. And then we were gonna take the three and put them with Public Works. So the tender went out. Well, there's Public Works Fire and somebody else, I think, Parks.
Parks.
So there was thirteen trucks went out, and then we had three businesses bid on them, and then we changed it. I believe that we put the water and sewer in, piggybacked it, and there were some changes done four days before it closed. So what we asked or we tried to, you know, come up with a better solution. And that would be moving forward, going with, say, if we went out to tender, we'd go out for tender for fourteen days, and we'd ask anybody putting in a tender, after seven days, check back on our website to see if any changes were made. So you don't change it two days at the end or four days. It gives them an opportunity to resubmit. And this one is very frustrating because the three businesses did give a lot of thought and put in tenders for that. And have two of them, you know, dismissed, it... To me, it's not great business. Now, the assistant or the acting manager gave me great, I guess, information on our website, and it's up to them to check our website. But it just seems to me that we want the best price available. We want our businesses, especially in Charlestown, to be able to bid on them. We don't want to deny anybody the opportunity to put in a tender. So when it comes here now that we cut two businesses out, I don't know if we have the legal opportunity to stop it or go out again. I'm not sure. So if Mr. Johnson wants to try a better explanation, then go ahead. But I, too, you know, we raise the concerns here about procurement. We can't just keep changing the rules all the time. So, you know, I don't know what to say. It's here for discussion, and, you know, if Mr. Johnson wants to take it on, then so be it. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Your worship, for the chair and counsel, to try and succinctly answer a couple of points that were made. There was... The city did have a tender issued for three vehicles internally. There may have been discussion whether it was the utility department was going to go for one or three vehicles, but the... My understanding, the only tender issued by finance was for three vehicles. Public Works simultaneously was getting ready to do some vehicles, saw there was a tender out. The specifications were pretty much the same. Discussions between departments and with finance, we amended the tender to sixteen vehicles and the specifications slightly and extended the closing date. As the report says, just because we've got separate legal corporations of those sixteen vehicles, Public Works is bringing forward this resolution for thirteen, and just because of committee timing, the utility department, my understanding, will bring forward the resolution for the other three at a future date. So that's the vehicles. In terms of advertising, we advertise the addendum the exact same way that we advertise the tender. That's putting it on our website and has been discussed. The website says, you know, addendums are pretty standard in tenders. You don't want to have to do them, but you want to make sure that you're buying something that is appropriate for your needs. We do consider... We don't issue an addendum. Finance could speak to it, but, you know, I wouldn't go to finance and say, can we issue an addendum within twenty-four hours of a closing? We realize that we have to find any anomalies or whatever in a decent time, and we've felt that four days is a decent time. Tenders, like I say, are standard, and then on our website, there is the indication that you should check back for any addendums. So somebody finds our website, finds our tender, finds our tender, they... I guess my feeling, some other staff probably feeling, is that they should be able to come back and see the addendum. In this case, the bids came in because the unit's number that they were tendering on and the specifications were not per the addendum. They have been deemed by staff and finance to be a non-compliance submissions, unfortunately.
Justice Burtard.
Thank you for that, Paul. And I understand all that. I think what's really getting me here is the fact that on March fifth, when the tender went out for the three vehicles, many, many car dealerships would have looked at, that's a great... Someone, please go off and start to draft up the response to that tender. We're bidding on three vehicles, and everybody goes about their business. You probably don't think to check back there every day, thinking that is there gonna be a change to this? And even if there is a change, how substantial would that change be? I know what you're saying, the onus is on them to do that. This is what I'm struggling with. It says the onus is on you to do that, but at the same time, we're not talking another vehicle addition here. We're talking ten more vehicles, eight-hundred-and-some thousand dollars. So I feel like because of our practices, we are not doing justice to our vendor community or to our... Sorry, to the businesses out in our communities. And I'm really struggling to support this. I feel it should be going back out to tender, and whatever number thirteen be put out in one package for another goes, everybody has a fair opportunity. The other flip side of that is, well, jeez, every time we do an addendum, we're gonna have to do this. This is a really catch twenty-two. I don't know what to do here in this sense, but I'm not feeling good about supporting it. So I guess if I'm going with that, I don't feel good in supporting this. I would recommend that it go back out to tender and give fair opportunity for thirteen vehicles to be packaged up in one tender to go forward. And on top of that, of course, in my committee, we're looking at the different bylaws. I can't stress enough. I mean, I know it's been bantered here on a... But every time we come to council, it's another reason why this thing needs to get done quickly. And this is just another reason because we're like, this isn't good business, as the Counselor said. That's the exact words I think he said. This isn't good business. So for that, I don't think I can support the resolution this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, response?
No, I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, that's his business. He works in that in his full-time job, so he knows all about it. So any way we can approve this, I'm fully supported of what you're saying, and I won't be supporting it either, Counselor Burtard. Thank you.
Deputy?
Yep. Thank you, your worship, and to the acting chair. If this evening we don't support this resolution, what's our next step? Just do we then bring out another resolution to say we want it to go back to committee, or how does that work? Just remind me of that process if we turn this resolution down. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. And I'm not hundred percent fully aware of what happens if it gets voted down tonight. Will it go back to the committee? Or maybe the finance director can tell us what we can do. Like, we put the tender out. I'm sure we have the ability to stop it and reevaluate it and put it out again very quickly, but I'm not a hundred percent correct on that, and maybe our director can help us there.
So just before we do that, Mr. Chair, I know the discussion that we had at Public Works and at Finance, and I know Counselor Bernard wants to get into it, too. But there were three bids: Fairall Ford, Reliable, and Somerside Chrysler. Two were disqualified because we were first told that they didn't acknowledge the addendums, which you don't have to. If you're a bidder, if you don't acknowledge the addendums and your price goes in with addendums there, that's too bad. You suck it up, or you eat the loss if there's a loss. But I was told that the two bids that were submitted were only for the three vehicles. Is that correct, Mr. Chair? Do you want to defer? No, no. The addendum... It's your responsibility to read the addendum, but I just want to know, did those two disqualified bidders, did they just bid on three vehicles, not on the sixteen? Is that what it is? Sorry, just go ahead, Counselor Bernard. Counselor Dran, is that what it was?
That's what's... I'm led to believe. That's what's happened, yeah.
Yeah. So that's... I found that out, and that's a disqualifier. So if you put a bid in for three and not sixteen, right? Well, people that are reading it, like Paul and the team, they'd say, well, he's only bidding for three. He's not bidding for the sixteen, so doesn't qualify. If he had said sixty thousand without reading the addendum for all the vehicles, then it'd be accepted. But it wasn't accepted because he only bid on the three.
Exactly.
It's... Look, this Procurement of Goods Act that the province has, they do it very simple. They go out for a standing order, and that standing order is for one vehicle, two vehicles, for one year, for twelve months. We just keep going out, plop, plop, plop. I think we have to start coming up with a better system. That's why it'd be great in the procurement bylaw. Counsel... No. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, your worship, through your worship to Acting Chair. I do believe that the option for counsel would be to make a friendly amendment to the resolution or to bring a new resolution to the floor, to send it back to tender again. The risk, as I understand it, would be that the compliant bidder, who was low bid and only bid that was compliant, would have, you know, would have the potential for some recourse back against the city. But that would be, the way I understand it, would be kind of limited to their profit on the transaction as opposed to the full value of the transaction. We have legal counsel here. They may be able to vector in on that. I just did want to make the comment, though, that it seems almost every procurement that comes through the council floor, we seem to be learning lessons. And the lesson that I've learned is that the devil is in the details in these transactions. There is a method to kind of mitigate this risk in the future, and that is by having... For this particular problem, would be that the proponents would register in order to get a tender package through the website. So they couldn't just download the tender package. The way it stands now, there could have been twelve people downloaded the package and only three people responded, and we have no way of knowing actually who did download the package. So even if we did take a proactive approach and reach out to the people we thought would respond to the tender, we might have missed one or two, and then we wouldn't be being fair to those one or two that we missed. So it's a delicate balance between procedural fairness and trying to create the best value for the city. So these are the processes and procedures that will go alongside and partner with the procurement bylaw. But this is why we need someone that's really experienced in procurement to lead that charge.
Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. And this was a conversation topic on finance, too. It looks to me, I mean, it's unfortunate. There's no question. I think everybody in finance felt that. But, I mean, you know, the tender went out, the addendums were added. As the interim manager was saying, that there was some disqualified bidders because they were bidding on three vehicles. And I think there were some criteria changes in some of the trucks, too. But at the end of the day, the tender went out, the bids come in, two were qualified, and I'm afraid now, like, we just can't change the rules as we go along here and say, I don't like who won that. I think we should go out again and cancel this. You can't do that. And in my opinion, we're opening up the door for litigation. So I think this year, the tender came in, they were just... The two were disqualified because they didn't follow the addendum, and there's one bidder left. So I'll be supportive. I kind of feel you have to.
Counselor Norman Beck, Word Three.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Bernard. I mean, it's unfortunate. It's too bad. But this is a case where, despite our best intentions with bylaws and things like that, until they don't... Until it comes to us and we say, really, that doesn't make sense, but we can't change it because the bylaw is the bylaw. We gotta follow the rules. And as unfortunate as this is, the expectations are laid out there, and we have what we have. Would we like a different result? I think everyone would sit here and say, yeah, probably. Or would have liked to have had three competitive bids as opposed to one. But our rules are our rules. That's why when we're... And again, I reiterate again, we're going through this bylaw... Our bylaw update, look at them and be critical about them. Because now's the time when we're gonna be updating them. And because you don't get a... You know, we're not getting the opportunity... I mean, you can, but it's a lot of work. So let's get these right and make sure that when we're... All the bylaws are coming out, that we do review them with a critical eye. Thanks.
Counselor McElair and Counselor Dran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. No, I'll just be brief. I certainly support the staff recommendation and kind of what's been said. Echo Counselor Bernard. He sits in finance with us, and it's really unfortunate, but I think to do otherwise, we would have a whole other problem in the legal thing, I would expect. And probably message for both sides in this. And, you know, certainly, we're working to improve what has to be improved on our end, and hopefully by year end, we'll have some pieces in place, not the least of which is hopefully an updated procurement bylaw and some of our processes and our staff and maybe a procurement officer, who knows? So anyway, that's all I'll say in that. Thank you.
Counselor Dran and Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, just a... Maybe it's a legal opinion. When you get the tender package, there's probably twenty-five pages there or more that just spell out what you can do. So we don't have to accept any tender, do we not? Like, so... don't have to accept any tender, do we not? Like, so, you know, when we say, well, we're going to be challenged legally, but when you read the packages, it's very clear that if council makes a decision and wants to go out again, and get, you know, maybe change some things and get a better, you know, we don't deem the tender acceptable, and we want to go back out, that's our prerogative, is it not? You know? Like I said, it's very clear in those tenders that we don't have to accept anyone, I believe.
Can we get a CAO? Do you want to try to answer that, or do you want to allow legal? What's the question here?
To councillor Duran's point, your worship, typically in our tender, all of our tender contracts, or anytime we're doing procurement, there is that clause that says we don't have to accept any bids. I do not know what this particular tender reads, however. So not having reviewed this specific release of this tender, I would have to defer to finance or whoever it was that released it to confirm that that language was in fact in there for this one.
Just one sec. Go ahead, and then I'll go to the deputy.
So could I put a deferral on until we get that information?
I'll second his deferral. I was just about to do that.
We could take it back, take a look at it, the legal ramifications, and then, you know, either come back or go back out again for tender.
So you're moving a deferral?
Please.
Second. Okay, so we got a deferral on the floor. That's what we're speaking to. Did you want to speak to it? Go ahead. On the deferral.
Yeah, I just want to understand exactly why we are deferring, what's the goal of the deferral, and what is going to be coming back to us. So I'd just like, I'd like specifications or specifics on that.
Yeah, as the CAO stated, I didn't look at all the pages of the contract. I just want to give the opportunity to have our legal representative look at the contract to see if we're able to deny this and go back out to tender again. I just feel that it's not fair to everybody involved, and moving forward, we would look forward for a better, in my opinion, a fair tender. But the reason I'm asking for the deferral is to give us time to look at the tender, to see if we're allowed to go back out again. If that explains it.
Councillor McLeir? Oh, no, you've already, yeah. Councillor McLeir?
So the deferral's on the floor, correct?
It's on the floor, and that's what we're speaking to.
So can our legal weigh in to give any comments in advance of that?
I wouldn't want to put her on the spot. Just, no, can just...
They're looking at the document.
Yeah.
We'd have to review it.
The document is what she's asking to look at.
I can confirm that the RFP document did have the sentence, "The city is not bound to accept the lowest or any bid received." That's only part of the question that council would...
What page is that on?
That is on, it's not in your package.
No, no, I got the tender here.
Page five.
Page five, under introduction, first paragraph, last sentence. Okay. Yeah, so the city's not bound to accept the lowest or any bid received. But you have a deferral on the floor?
Can I just speak to...
Oh, yes.
Your worship, just to the deferral. As long as it's understood that although, as the CFO has pointed out, that clause is in there, I'm not sure how it works with respect to going back out unless you are changing some of the specifications when you're going back out. So that's the other thing that I would need to know through legal, is that if we are, if we have decided not to accept any of the bids, and we go back out with the exact same information, are we culpable for the bid that was theoretically successful?
Just one second. Just hold on. Do you want to just ask, and then he'll answer both? Go ahead.
Yeah, sure, because that's my thought, is even though I think our business practice is really poor in this case, and I think we can do better, I don't know if we've done anything wrong, because they did follow the processes, unfortunately. So this is the push-pull. I think it's unfortunate, and I certainly think we need to start looking at how we can do better. But I don't know, even with the deferral, what can we do in that case?
Okay, councillor Duran, and then councillor...
Our full intentions would be go out for sixteen trucks. You know, this came in at three trucks or whatever, right? That's where the confusion was. So when you say, do we go out again, well, we'd be going out for sixteen vehicles, right? That's...
Again, can we just ask the, Paul Johnston? The sixteen, I think, for the sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty thou, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Is that correct, Paul? For sixteen?
Your worship, the tender after addendum was asking for sixteen vehicles. I would say, as CAO Fraser has noted, everybody puts a clause in that we're not responsible for anything. We have it in our tender, any airline ticket you buy, any train ticket, any concert you go to, the vendor can do whatever they want, but it has to be reasonable. We can choose not to award this, but it has to be reasonable ground. It's not because you were wearing a red hat. So we would need to make sure that if we aren't awarding or we're going out again, as Director of Finance said, you know, we open ourselves up to somebody saying, I could have had profit there that I no longer have. We open ourselves up to saying, some of my proprietary financial information has already been made public on this matter, and now, three weeks later, do I drop my price a little bit because everybody knows what it was, or there's a landmine of questions that are kind of possibly coming up? Thank you.
We're not trying to trump anyone here.
Yeah, so this kind of, at first I was hearing that we're going to get, defer this to get a legal opinion, to see whether there's anything to be looking at, which I was okay with. But then I heard councillor Duran say, we're going to look to reissue the tender for sixteen vehicles. But I thought the purpose of this motion was to look at the legal perspective only, and just get that opinion and then come back.
That's what I'm...
Did I hear, did I hear...
Do you want to clarify, councillor Duran?
If there's any clarification, or if I'm missing something, but I'm okay with going back, if the deferrals, to go back to look at, from a legal perspective, what is it we're doing. Take that legal perspective and come back to us, and then we'll decide.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
And leave it at that. But I don't want to get into talking about the reissuance of the...
I think we're clear on the deferral, right? You're good? Okay. So could I just add one other thing? Is this one year, two years? How many years? Like, there has to be a timeline, a definitive, like, if you leave it open, Paul, do we know?
I'm sorry, your worship. The tender we issued was the intent of a one-time thing that we would buy. There are, you know, times when if we decided a week later that we needed seventeen trucks instead of sixteen, there's the possibility that we could approach the successful vendor and say, do you have one more? Can you give us one more? We extended it the same price. But those are things that are addressed as they come up.
Yeah, but should we not put a definitive, open-close? That's what I'm asking. Councillor Duran, do you know what I'm saying?
That'd be a great thing. I mean, you've referenced that with the province, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, that would be great to add that into the tender when it comes time.
Okay. Councillor Bernard, do you want to wrap it up, and then we can vote on the deferral?
Okay. And like I said earlier, it's unfortunate. I don't think that you can just go and cancel a tender, and then re-tender the same thing. Because at the end of the day, it comes back to a bidder won, everybody knows the price, and now you're going to come back and say, well, legally, can we cancel that and then redo it again? Because we want to get more bidders involved. To me, ridiculous. The bid was done, they missed the addendums, and this is the result. So...
Question on the deferral? Okay. All those in favor of the deferral of this resolution, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. All, councillor Twill, yea or nay? One, two, three, four, five. All those against. Five, four. Deferral carries. Okay. Next resolution, or is that it? That's it? Is this an amendment?
Yes, your worship, there's an amendment bylaw for the War Memorial. To amend the City of Charlton's War Memorial Monument bylaw to reference legislation pertaining to the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island. Assigned bylaw number 2025 WMM01 reflect recommended amendments cited in the Enforcement Amendment bylaw 2024 EA01 to include references to the City's Enforcement and Summary Proceedings bylaw 2024 ESP01. Update bylaw template and incorporate minor housekeeping amendments to ensure overall consistency throughout the bylaw. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Charlton War Memorial Monument bylaw be read a second time, and that the said bylaw now be approved and adopted. A move by councillor Bob Duran, seconded by councillor John McLeir.
Shella Carey. Contrary? No. Okay. Is that it, councillor Duran? Good job, sir. Thank you very much. Six point six, Finance. Is it Finance Audit and Tendering Administration? Councillor John McLeir?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Finance Audit and Tendering Administration Committee met April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. The minutes that the meeting is in your package, there's one resolution for your consideration. Doing my best to answer any questions you may have, and fail on that. If manager Lane and CFO Dan Jenkins here to, and possibly, no, I don't know, maybe Paul Johnson as well. We'll just see how it goes. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? We got one resolution there, councillor McLeir?
Yes.
Okay.
Your worship, Finance Audit, Tendering and Administration's only resolution tonight is moved by councillor John McLeir, seconded by councillor Terry Bernard. Be it resolved that council approve the Department of Public Works to construct all five awarded sidewalk design sections in the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six fiscal year, and that council approve the capital budget increase of one point five million to the new construction account under sidewalks and multipurpose trails category under the Public Works FY two oh two five two six capital budget, account number zero one one four three three zero five four zero two five five oh nine seven, and that council note that three point seven million dollars through the Canada Community Building Fund, CCBF, is available for the fiscal year two oh two five two six and is yet to be allocated.
Okay, councillor Duran, and then councillor McCabe. Councillor Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, councillor McLeir. Here it is, two weeks after we passed the capital budget, and we're going to go back in for a million and a half more on the design for sidewalks. I mean, we had a discussion at Public Works with our manager that maybe we're going to look at sidewalks. You know, it was a very aggressive plan that we approved here a couple of years ago, and we were going to look at what sidewalks would need to be done. You know, again, when we get this funding, which is part of the resolution, I had asked, can that funding be used for sidewalks? And if I'm mistaken, I don't think it can, but I may be mistaken. I just find that, you know, we passed that budget, Public Works said no, we're going to develop our sidewalk program, a million and a half this year, and a million and a half carryover from last year. So again, we're in it, you know, two weeks, and we're going to extend the capital budget a million and a half. I think there's other projects that can be done. I think our Public Works manager, new manager coming in, we would look at the ability to get which sidewalks are needed. I know certain councillors coming up, you know, almost on a weekly, daily time, saying that, you know, it's dangerous here, it's dangerous there, we need something. So I can't really support this. You know, I sit in the Public Works, we put it up to Finance to discuss it, but I think it's a costly issue for me. Thank you.
Councillor McCabe?
Thank you. And I am laughing that we did just approve our capital budget two weeks ago, too, and already we're back here looking for one and a half million. I would really like to see that one and a half million be put in initially, because I do think that the sidewalks, we've kind of committed through our five-year master plan that we were going to try and follow. My question is, with this one and a half million dollars that we are going to put in, does that put us on par? I don't know where Public Works are. Okay, there he is, Mr. Johnson. Sorry, this is important, though. Does this put us on par to continue on now with our scheduled five-year master plan? And my second part of that is, I'd love to see the update for this five-year master plan with the new additions for these years that we've started to progress. So will we be on par with the year two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five plan?
And councillor McLeir, I'll write the deferral?
Yeah, and just to, before Paul kind of takes us back, to summarize to councillor Duran's remarks, like, in a nutshell, councillor Duran is right, this is asking to improve basically our capital budget, another one point five million that we just recently, you know, we just recently passed. And at the last council meeting, there was discussion around this very topic, you know, where are we going to go with our sidewalk plan? And basically, in a nutshell, after being discussed in whatever Finance, this, if approved, and it has, that's a recommendation from Finance to get it up to council here, if we do want to approve this, and I think councillor McCabe, your question is, will this put us on track with the five-year plan? And it's my understanding, it will. So that's what the additional one point, one point five is, and where that comes from, or what that looks like in the twenty-five, twenty-six budgeting process, I think manager or acting manager Paul can speak to that, or possibly CFO Dan or...
Okay, so you want to defer to him?
Sure.
You want to defer, okay. Mr. Johnson?
Your worship, councillors. I think it was the fall, maybe of two thousand and twenty-three, the Public Works department created a five-year sidewalk plan, and I wasn't involved in it. It seems to have been kind of developed over, excuse me, around a three million dollar annual construction spend. Of that plan, work was done in, our tenders were put out in two thousand and twenty-four as year one. Unfortunately, due to surveying issues, the tenders didn't get out until late in the year. They were awarded for approximately three million dollars worth of work, but physically, to use round numbers, we only got about one point five of it constructed before the end of the year. When we come into this year's budget, the process is that that committed work has to be, and I'll use air quotes, rebudgeted this year. So whatever our funding is this year, one point three of it is already committed. When we did the budget, there was a three million dollar budget for sidewalk last year, and there became a three million dollar budget for sidewalk this year. On the face of it, that looks good, but when you put into the factor that one point five of it's already committed, all of a sudden, your program is half as much as you were theoretically intending. The staff had gone out prior to the budget being approved and tendered for approximately three million dollars worth of work, year two on that original plan. When that resolution to award design came to the floor, it highlighted the misunderstanding or whatever had occurred, that we only have one point five of our three million available for this work. We would have, we would design and do the rest next year. It was through that expressed comments on the floor at the time, I felt that we should do all this work, that we've gotten to this point where we're saying, there is some CCBF funding that the city can apply in the global sense to Public Works, Capital Works. It could be used to facilitate constructing all of that work that we had designed, we are in the process of designing for this year. And at the end of this fiscal, we budgeted three million last year, we budgeted four point five this year, but we only spent one point five last year. but we only spent 1.5 last year and we hope to spend 4.5 this year. So the two, you know, the average is the 3 million a year. Hopefully, that explains. Thank you.
Councillor Bernard.
Thank you. And thank you for that, Paul. So really, really what's happening, and Paul's highlighted this, I think, three times now. Early on in the budget deliberations, he flagged it and he's flagged it a couple of times since. So the $3 million that's usually in for sidewalks, half of that was committed, which leaves 1.5 million dollars for sidewalks. The CCFB money, it's Canadian Community Building Fund or the gas tax as we know it, is available and is not allocated. So it's not like we're borrowing more capital money. It's money that the federal government has given us to use. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, I thought we allocated 2 million to the asphalt when we were doing our budget.
Thank you through His Worship to councillor Bernard. So we didn't specifically identify what the CCBF funds would be used towards. We did know for sure that we would be able to use all of that allocation on the projects that we would do in this fiscal year. So we did factor in the CCBF though in terms of our interest costs and what we would have to borrow to fund these projects, so we did kind of factor that into that.
So it's in part of the revenue, okay. So it has been allocated, so to bring that back up to the 3 million to stay on schedule, it's not cost the city any capital dollars that we're borrowing. This is money that's sitting there that we've gotten from the federal government. So we thought it made sense to be able to put that budget up to what the interim manager has been asking for and plus it keeps us on schedule with the sidewalk work and the five-year schedule. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just as a follow-up to councillor McCain's question to the interim manager, Mr. Johnson, can we get a copy of the updated sidewalk plan? Just to know where we're at. I know it was indicated that we're on track, but I don't have that. We came in at 2022, I don't remember saying that there was this coming through in 2023 and starting in '24 of this five-year plan, but I know it's always been talked about. Can that be sent to us, please? Thank you.
No problem. Yeah. Councillor Duron.
Thank you. Just for clarification, when the director spoke about the fund and the allocations about where it could go or where their thoughts would be going on pavement, you know, that funding is for that. There's no funding for sidewalks, as I believe, and, you know, when you say we already have the money there, well, we'd either have to take that money from a certain project or borrow more money, if I'm not correct. Like, the resolution is we're going to increase our capital budget, so the money's not sitting there for this project. Am I correct in that?
Okay. Councillor McAllaire, you have to direct, are you all right with deferring that? Yeah. That's all right. That's all right. I just wanna.
No, that's, it's a fair question councillor Duron, and there's debate and discussion around this point at Finance and, you know, at the end of the day, and I'll let Dan speak to it, but really, at the end of the days, I understand it, it is increasing the capital budget at the end of the day and the CCBF money is a revenue piece. And how you square the concern that you have, maybe let Dan speak to it.
Sure, thank you. Through His Worship to councillor Duron and McAllaire. So councillor Bernard is correct and councillor Duron, you're both correct. There is unallocated funds, we do have those funds. They're not specifically attached to a project, but in terms of where we expected to be with the budget, we did factor those funds coming in towards our capital projects in terms of calculating our interest costs to borrow funds to fund those. So you are correct, we will either have to fund a greater portion of a different project out of long-term debt or borrow more. So if we authorize the spending and we spend as much as we authorize, we will have to borrow a million five more than we built into our financial plan overall. Okay.
Oh, there he is. What's that? Clarification? Go right ahead.
Just clarification, Dan, because if there's 1.5 million in the gas tax money that the federal government has given us and it's sitting there, not allocated, and you want to put it into the Public Works, yes, the budget would go up, but it's not costing city taxpayers extra capital funds.
So through His Worship to councillor Bernard, in terms of what we built into our financial plan, the cost to carry the debt that we would incur to complete these capital projects, from what the budget agreed, you know, the budget figures were, we will have to borrow another million five. So we factored, we have $3.7 million allotment this fiscal year from CCBF, none of which has been specifically attached to any project. But we did assume that we would apply those funds to any one or all of the projects. We could spread them far and wide, but we have many projects that would qualify for the funding and more projects than we have funding, so we'll use all of that 3.7. If we spend more than the 70 million that we plan to spend, 71.5, we'll have to, we would end up borrowing another million and a half above and beyond what we factored into our cost calculations and.
Yeah, no.
Allocated, allocated towards program.
Okay. Councillor, just one sec, councillor Beck waiting in the, councillor Beck?
I don't know, I mean, we just went through a capital budget, extensive capital budget discussion, and here we are, coming in, talking about Johnny Come Lately. And, you know, it's kind of like we're questioning about, we have processes and we have, they're outlined. And if they get in, we just approved it, we had a wholesome, everyone had the opportunity to discuss. As far as I'm concerned, it's too late to the game, I'm not gonna support it.
Seven has been allocated.
Yeah, we have to just slow down, guys. So could I just add up here? Mr. Chair? Elena, 460,000. Elizabeth, 340,000. Perxide, 530,000. Stockman, 1.1 million. And Westcombe, 750,000. So that's 3.1, 3.2 million, correct? So we have here this 1.5 on top of what we already budgeted for was what? What did we already budget in, what's in for sidewalks? Is it two? Three. So this would bring it up to 4.5. So is that for the design and the work? Because I just add up the three numbers that were on your spreadsheet that you sent out to us.
Sorry, Your Worship, I'm not looking at the same document you, but if you just rhymed off five street sections.
Yeah.
That's what we were designing this year, and as you said, it, staff estimate is approximately $3 million. That is our budget this year, $3 million. But of our budget, we have already committed 1.5 to finish last year's work.
Right.
So that's when we came a month ago and said, we will award, and it was the decision of council, we will award all five sections for design, understanding that because half of our money's committed to last year's work, we can only do about half of this year's work. And council at that point in time expressed an interest that we should find a way to do all of this work and you asked the Public Works Committee to bring this forward.
Yep. Here it is. Okay. Question? In the last sentence in the resolution, it says that council, John, councillor McAllaire, what does it say? That council note that 3.7 million through the Canada Community Building Fund is available for the 25-26 and is yet to be allocated.
And that's all we were looking to do was allocate it.
Want to address it?
No, the, I think there's been fair discussion on the floor. Like I said, we got, you know, I feel how we got here was from last council meeting, discussion around this very thing, sidewalk plan. Did we want to kind of get it back on schedule, this five-year plan that's been working from? And it was discussed at Finance. This was, this is what it would take to get it back, you know, on that track and to councillor Beck's concern, like I said, you know, Johnny Come Lately, looking at the capital budget here, we, you know, it was, we approved a 60, 60,722,000 capital budget and here we are, we're basically at the end of the day, I think, you know, however you look at it, it's been, we're looking to basically, I guess, amend that for 1.5 to get us back on track and it's before council and here we are and you can decide if you want to approve it or not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question called? Is this your second time? Yeah.
I never spoke yet. Oh, yes, I did. Yes, it is my second time.
It's your second time.
Sorry. Do we have an allocation for the 3.7 million somewhere else to use? Is there another place where we would want to use that tax funding?
Councillor McAllaire, do you want to defer? Yeah.
Yes, there are no shortage of places we can use the CCBF funding. Sidewalks, street resurfacing, other capital projects that we undertake, water, wastewater management, all of those. But, you know, this is one that can be earmarked for it as well.
Okay. No, that's twice. Yeah, I know. Okay, guys. Oh, they're always, oh, no, I know, they're always quick. Go ahead.
Very quick. That would be the sort of thing that I would like to do, is look at the entirety of what we have, as opposed to allocating, at the end of the day, that might be where we put it. But if that's an option, then let's get all the other stuff on the table and then have a discussion about that. Thank you.
Are we asking to defer it now or what? Okay. Who's moving the referral? Moved by councillor Matar. Do you want to move the referral, councillor Matar? Yes. Seconded by the deputy? You want to speak to the referral? You don't? Okay. Oh, you want to speak to the referral? Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to clarify why I'm looking, I'm excited about a deferral so we can get exactly what you're talking about. Staff's recommendations and identified priorities where that money really needs to be, like, if we need water and sewer work done, is that more important than sidewalk work done in our master plan? So we need to have that information so we can make sure that we're using the money where it needs to be used.
Referral's on the floor. All those in favor of the referral, raise your hand. Against? Are you scratching your head, councillor Twill, for it? Are you up? Okay. Nine zero. Nine zero for the referral. Okay. What's the next resolution? Okay, we're gonna be deferred night. It's a deferral night. Is there a second reading? You read that? Did we read the second reading for the War Memorial?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Okay. Economic Tourism and Cultural Development, councillor Terry Bernard and Mr. Wayne Long's here. Good to see you, Wayne.
And just a couple of highlights, Your Worship. Charlottetown's event calendar remains vibrant this month, as it has been for the last six months. PEI Fashion Weekend and the Junior East Wheelchair Basketball Championships were held last weekend, while upcoming events include the Festival of Wines, PEI, Andrews Hockey Growth Program's Oyster Cup, which attracts quite a few teams, Your Worship, and Proudly Canadian, a celebration of all things Canada. Additionally, Your Worship, if you don't know it, the PEI Burger Lover's in full swing. It goes till April 30th with over half of the 88 participating burgers available right here in Charlottetown, Your Worship. This week, the City Hall Bell Tower will be lit green in celebration of National Tourism Week. This Coast to Coast Initiative, led by Tourism Industry Association of Canada, highlights the people, places, and experience that make tourism a powerful driver of community, culture, and economic growth, Your Worship. So if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Oh, by the way, I think there's one resolution for council consideration.
Okay. So questions? Councillor Beck and Deputy Mary Yankoff. Councillor Beck.
It's not really in the package, but I'm gonna say it anyway.
Oh.
No, no, I tell you, it's a good news story.
I always say, councillor Twill, if it's not in the package, what did we say? Councillor McKinnon?
It's good news.
Well, you've always said that for councillor Twill.
The acting CAO, councillor Bernard, and myself had the pleasure of attending the PEI Symphony Orchestra on Sunday afternoon. And what they did at the start, they opened it with "Oh, Canada." And I've never seen "Oh, Canada" when I'm at a sporting event or anywhere. I rarely ever do.
And you're a principal?
I don't.
You play it every morning.
I don't sing it. I said, sing it, stay on track there, Your Worship. Anyway, the PEI Symphony kicked into this rendition of "Oh, Canada" that was just electrifying. And it was unbelievable how, in this spirit of the world in which we live today, that that happened. And it was a moment of patriotism for anyone that was there. I'm sure they shared my feelings. And there was a buzz that went right through that whole building. And the performance they put on that, they put on this mothership song or something in the first half, and it was like mind-blowing stuff. My point being, we have a jewel in the center of our city that provides a cultural element to our fabric that cannot be denied. And that was a shining example that we had the other day when the PEI Symphony put on a performance for 90%, place was 90% full or more, I'm not sure. But it was just something that really speaks to the cultural fabric, the infrastructure and the benefits that we have in this city that we cannot never take for granted in terms of the impact that they can have, especially at times like this when we're dealing with a unity crisis that's going on in our city. So thank you for indulging me. I hope, I hope I didn't step out of line, but that's, I had to get it off my chest.
We're that shining city on the top of the hill. We are. Councillor Bernard, did you want to say something before?
I'm just gonna just say I agree 100% and the place was packed. So it just goes to show that it's the kind of talent that's on the stage, but the place was packed and it was, it was well worth attending.
Jaylen, Jaylen Bate, is that his?
Yes.
He's the new maestro. Unbelievable. Deputy.
Thank you. Just to follow suit with councillor Beck, it's not in the package, but it's a proper question because we.
I know councillor Duron would be on it.
I think there's something in the package for economic development that might be missing, so to the chair. I'm wondering where our monthly report is from our board member that sits on the Eastlink Board, and I assume that we would get a monthly update on the Eastlink Centre from our board member, so I'm just wondering where that might be.
Do you have an answer? Could you just stand up, please?
We could, we can, we could forward that, no problem. We could take it to our next committee meeting or we'll get it sent to you right away if you want. Okay?
Do we have one resolution? Just one second, am I correct?
Your Worship, we have one resolution, Economic Tourism and Cultural Development, moved by councillor Terry Bernard, seconded by councillor Mitchell Twill. Be it resolved that council supports the Special Events Reserve Fund, SERF, committee's request to become a legally incorporated body independent of the city corporation.
Question? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. And you have a first reading?
Yes, we have a first reading, Your Worship, of the Business Improvement Area Bylaw, Amendment Bylaw. Amend the City of Charlottetown's Business Improvement Area Bylaw to enhance the definition Amend the City of Charlestown's Business Improvement Area Bylaw to enhance the definition of business improvement area, to include the option of a Business Improvement District Assigned Bylaw Number 2025 BIA-01, reference to the Municipal Government Act. Revised definitions, format bylaw, using the appropriate bylaw template, correct minor typographical errors, and ensure overall consistency throughout the bylaw. Resolve that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown's Business Improvement Area Bylaw be read a first time, and that's moved by Councilor Terry Bernard and seconded by Councilor Mitchell Twill.
Shall I carry? Pass. Contrary? No. Okay.
Resolve that the bylaw now be approved as a city bylaw, and that it be entitled the City of Charlestown Business Improvement Area Bylaw, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Councilor Terry Bernard, seconded by Councilor Mitchell Twill.
Shall I pass? Pass. Contrary? No. Nine zero. That's it? Good, sir. Thank you very much. Councilor Beck? Stick to the report?
I will. My report is very short, so there's not much to stick to. Human Resource Committee did not meet since our last regular council meeting. I will, just for the public record, say that we are making progress on the recruitment of our new CAO, and the process has been ongoing, and I wish to thank His Worship and Councilor McCabe for their diligence in part of this process. It's been very interesting, very exciting, and we hope to have things, I hate to put timelines on the end of it, but I, I think a realistic timeline might be somewhere, you know, mid-May, something like that, if we can have things kind of potentially wrapped up, as I did indicate into you in the update today. I gave you the update in terms of where we're at, so if there are any questions about that, feel free to reach out to me at any time. And if there are any other questions, feel free to fire away.
Any questions? Opinions? Objections? Okay. Strategic Priorities, Communication, and Intergovernmental Cooperation, Councilor Justin Tarrett, Ward Two.
Thank you, Your Worship. The Strategic Priorities, Communication, and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee met on March the eleventh of 2025, and the draft minutes are included in your package. There are no resolutions this evening for your consideration. However, there is one notice of motion to amend the procedural bylaw. So before you have any questions, I can read the notice of motion on the, that I'm putting forward, and then take any questions you might have after that. Okay, so this evening, we are putting forward a notice of motion. So as per Section eighty-six, three of the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island, this serves as notice of motion to amend the City of Charlestown procedural bylaw at the next regular meeting of council. So I will put out there again that I know that Tracy had reached out to all of council soliciting feedback on the procedural bylaw. You know, I hope you had an opportunity to, to submit your feedback, and if you haven't, you know, if you want to quickly get that in, because I know we're, we're getting close on time. But I think it goes back to Councilor Beck's comment earlier this evening, you know, if we want to inflict change and ensure that we have our bylaws up to where we need them to be, it's important for this feedback to be provided. Otherwise, you know, we find ourselves in these places where we have debates over bylaws because we're not providing the proper feedback. So again, I, I welcome you to provide your feedback into Tracy as quickly as possible, and hopefully she can incorporate some of those changes into that. Any questions on my package? Please feel free to address.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair. I sit on this committee, and one of the things that we decided at the last meeting was anytime we start the process of updating and making changes to a bylaw, that it was going to be put together in an easily found package on our OneDrive showing the existing bylaw and potential changes. So I'm just wondering if, you know, when, when we're going to start seeing that on our OneDrive.
Councilor Tarrett?
Thank you for that question, Deputy. So I know under our council documents, there is a folder there for all city bylaws updated as, as March of 2025. I made the assumption that that is the repository that, that we requested in our, in our meeting, so I will defer to the CAO. I know Melanie's not here, maybe that, maybe Melanie could have answered that, but to our CAO. Is that the right assumption, that that is our folder where we are keeping that repository for council's CAO?
Through you, Your Worship, to Councilor Matard. I'm just in the OneDrive now, and I'm not actually seeing. I'm, I'm not sure whether it's located under Strategic Priorities where you're referencing it, or whether it's under-
No, it's not directly under council.
Under council documents?
I think, I think-
There is a document, you're right, Councilor, there is a document called All City Bylaws Updated As of March, and-
That's probably not our working folder, though, I would say.
That is not, that would not be the working folder, because there is stuff, sorry, there is stuff in there all dated from 2024. So we'll have to circle back on that and, and ensure that we are providing that link for you for the information that, the current information that's on the bylaw amendments.
Okay. So to, to address the deputy's question, so we'll circle back and make sure that we do. I know we did, we brought that, we had a great conversation about having a central repository so that people could go in and see the amendments that were being made. Those would be real-time documents where the edits would be occurring. So we'll ensure that council get access to that environment. We talked about what that would look like and where it would be, so, yeah, we'll follow up on that.
Follow up, Your Worship, on that. I know Tracy and the work that she had done on, on some of the bylaws, I think she was sending them directly out to council in an email to say, this is, this is something you can review and, and provide your feedback. But we certainly will also, as it's, as, in a time-sensitive way, we'll get it out to you as soon as, if you're not checking this shared folder all the time, you might not know, we just gave you something brand new to put your eyes on. So in, in the interest of due diligence, we'll make sure we send you an email and say, this is the latest, greatest of this, but we'll also put it in that shared folder.
Yeah. Councilor McCabe.
Thank you. You're going to laugh when I ask this question. I'm proposing that we maybe, for this bylaw, get together as a group and really kind of talk about some things and go through it. This is a really important document for us as council, and I think sometimes someone might have a, a perspective or a different view on something which will trigger something that I might have missed in, in this document. It is our, it is our working document as council, it's our guide. And I really think for, for us to commit to maybe coming together and really breaking this down and having some good conversation would be, would be smart.
Thank you, Councilor McCabe. You know, I certainly, I would support that approach. I, you know, I think it's important. It's an important bylaw that certainly drives and, you know, determines how we operate, especially within council here. So, you know, we've, we've, we did individually kind of submit our feedback, for those who did. How that gets incorporated in, I'm sure there's overlap, I'm sure lots of people think the same thing, but there's not always a different perspective being recognized amongst council for that. So kind of goes back to something in the procedural bylaws, how do we do that? Is that some type of information educational session that we can have? We're not making a decision, we're just, we're providing our feedback on our particular-
What's that?
And that's fine.
It has to be a council meeting.
Okay, well, we'll look at the format of what that would look like, but it would probably be a separate, a separate event where we're, so that'd be an open, public debate as to what we're doing.
Yeah, it, it'll go back to the committee, right? And then we'll forward it back to council, correct? Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, take that under consideration. Thank you.
So again, on page three sixteen, you have high priority bylaws where we're at, correct? That's for all of council to see? Okay. And the red stands for, I just, I'm just trying to see procurement bylaw, zoning bylaw, that means inaction? Don't know what the-
Yeah, I think my understanding is the red ones are the ones that are being actively worked on, if I recall.
Okay. 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 Good. Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, great. Protective and Emergency Services, Councilor McCabe.
Thank you. So our Protective and Emergency Services Committee met on the twenty-fifth of March. The minutes are in your package. We have one resolution ahead here tonight, and we don't have an update of a city bylaw, but we are, have a first reading to repeal the City of Charlestown Taxi Bylaw. And in your report, you will see a really well-done report by our bylaw officer justifying reasons for the request, the request to repeal this particular bylaw. Right now, currently, we're the only municipality that actually has a taxi bylaw. It's very dated to, to where we are today in 2025. And I know the chief's here to answer some questions, but I know the report's very detailed too, so hopefully we'll get with the times and be able to, to move ahead. Any questions? I'll do my best to answer.
Councilor McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. I don't see the fire chief here, but I've been asking for months and months for the Fire Writers Underwriter Story. And in February, I was told it's coming in March. We're now the middle of April, and we still have not heard anything where this fire department is going for the North End or this, for the city or anything, so. And another thing, I put a, almost a year now, I put a notice of motion on the floor about open drug use within the city for the bylaw, and haven't heard any response to that. So is there anybody able to give me an answer on that?
Councilor McCabe.
I can tell you that the last update on the Fire Writer's Study was we were going to get through budget, which we did, and that we are going to come to council in a closed session. I believe the date is the twenty-second of April.
Fourth Tuesday of this month.
Yep. We're going to have, we're going to have an update and a presentation on the Fire Writer's Study. As far as the request to look at open use drug, I wasn't part of the committee at that time. Are you familiar with that, Chief, to be able to respond? Or we could take it back to committee and come back next time, if that's what you prefer.
Chief.
Your Worship, Chair, Councilor McKinnon, yeah, if we could take that back to the committee, there's a lot of moving parts to, to, to that. It's, it's a complicated issue that has federal, provincial, and municipal implications. I can tell you, as part of, being part of the, the Board for the Canadian Chiefs of Police, we are lobbying federal prosecutors to rethink some of the policy directives regarding simple possession of narcotics and, but we know there's some hard realities too when it relates to addictions and, and treatment mechanisms that are associated to changes in that legislation. So if we could just have some patience and some more time to, to explore that, that'd be appreciated.
Okay. Okay, we got a resolution. Resolution number one.
Protective and Emergency Services Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Julie McCabe, seconded by Councilor Bob Dran. Be it resolved that the request to enter into a development encroachment agreement for an outdoor patio to be located at the following location, the two perpendicular parking spaces in front of Forty-three Queen Street, PID number three-three-five-six-five-three, the island resto and bar be approved to the end of the 2026 season, subject to annual permit applications and fees, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Councilor Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Councilor McCabe, I'm just wondering, there were some concerns last year about parking in downtown, and I know I brought up a couple of times in here. I wonder if there was any work done on the amount of parking spots we're allocating for patios? And take into consideration the amount of construction that's going on, the amount of parking spaces that are out of inventory now? So I just wonder, I'm reading through the minutes, and it's saying the forty-six parking spots allocated, this will be the last two. So is that the same as last year, or has there been any work, you know, done on taking into consideration, like you have Great George, Great George and Kent with the construction going on, we have the DVA construction going on? Is there any work put into the amount of parking spaces that we're losing due to construction plus the patios? And if not, I can take it under advisement.
What I can tell you, that these are the last two spots that will expire at the end of next year, where all parking spots are going to be expired, Council Bernard. Hopefully, at that time, we will have one patio bylaw that will fall to the responsibility of our planning department, as well as some more input from our parking strategy that might, we might incorporate into that as well. So right now, these are the last two spots that are permitted for this year, and then in one year's time, hopefully, we'll have a real good revamp of everything that's happening with parking.
Oh, oh, look at that. It's eight oh one. Do I have somebody that will, moved by Council Bernard, seconded by Councilor Beck? All those in favor to go over our time limit? Great. That was nine, nine, eight zero now. And just as an aside, when Councilor McCabe talked about the forty-six spots in the bylaw, it's back to one of those references we had earlier tonight. The bylaw right now, as it stands, is forty-six spots, so it's pretty hard for us, even though there is a lot of congestion downtown, until we change that bylaw, forty-six is forty-six. So, anyhow, yes, Councilor Beck.
Yeah, so if I understand it correctly, we've granted all the existing ones till the end of this year, correct? So this motion is saying to approve it till the end of next year. And I thought we approved through this year pending the patio parking strategy review, bylaw review, and whatnot. So should this, I'm okay with approving it for this, for this year, but should it read till the end of 2025 and not 2026? Because aren't we going to be starting anew this next year?
This was explained, that these are our last two spots, and typically, they'd go for a couple-year time span, but this is a one-year, it's going to follow the encroachment thing for next year when we come and look at this. These are the last two spots. Next year, they're all going to open up, and it's all going to start again. Nope, these are going to open up too. Everything's going to open up because it's moving. It's moving from police now, it's going into planning, and there's going to be a whole switch to how it's working.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's when everything's closed. That's when they all reopen, at the end of the next season, right?
So two years.
Just, just one second.
I thought it was the end of-
Okay. Can we get police?
Well, it was Todd that presented. Do you know the answer to the question?
Yeah. No, just let him answer.
Yeah, Your Worship, Chair, these, it is the end of next year. These are, these are provincially, and maybe Mike and, these are provincial easements that are applied for and have a two-year window. So there is a lot going on with the bylaw right now, a lot of transfer of, of ownership that's being considered. Certainly, we're mindful of that and how it relates to construction also. I think this parking study is going to be very helpful in getting an inventory of our parking and what parking looks like moving forward. But as you know, we're, we're reinventing a lot of things and trying to keep in perspective the needs of the downtown businesses also, who, when they invest in these patios, are, it's a considerable amount of money to invest, and so it's not something you can just grant and take away. There's considerable, thousands of dollars' worth of investment.
Okay. Councilor McCabe?
No, Council McKinnon, no, Council McKinnon, just, let's just keep the order going, like, just going back and forth, just- I appreciate that, but he was doing a follow-up question. Your name's there. So, I'm wondering, I know they're going to look at the patio bylaws, but one thing I'd like to see in there, and I've had comments from people, and I agree with the chief, there is a great investment, and I enjoy going to the patios, but when they take two slots, two parking spaces, they're going right to the line with the patios. Cars are not able to park right up to the next lot and get out of their vehicles. I've had a lot of people talking about that when they come downtown. So really, they're, they're paying for two spots, but there's technically four that's being out of commission. I'd just like that to be addressed whenever the bylaw is being spoken to.
Okay. Councilor McCabe.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have some good discussion as- I'm sure we'll have some good discussion as it switches over to planning as we look at this new, this new requirements. Thank you.
Council Beck, second time, right?
Yeah, so, and pardon me if I'm misunderstanding this, but I thought last year, when we approved the patios for last year, we approved them for last year and this year. And they were going to be expiring because we were, we've been talking about this patio bylaw review for quite a while. We've been talking about the parking strategy for quite a while. So, again, I, my, my understanding is that the 46 spots would be up because we wanted to give some certainty to the businesses last year, to give them a two-year predictability and commit to that for two years, and then they would all be kind of up for review next year. So, if I'm reading this correctly, it's saying that this resto bar would be for this year and next year, but all those other ones would not be. So, we're granting this one for this year and next year? But all the other ones are have to, gonna have to reapply? Maybe I'm missing something.
No, Council Beck, and maybe the year's wrong in the resolution. I know that the, it was very clearly stated that these two parking spaces would be allotted to go on the same schedule as all the other parking lots, so, or parking patio stuff, when the patios end for that, when's the time limit? Was it this year, at the end of this year that we were changing it, or was it the end of 2026? I understood it was one year, too, that they were only coming in for one year ago, and that this parking, or patio bylaw was moving over to planning, and we were gonna try and incorporate that. I'm not sure. They're all supposed to be together.
Good. Tracy, can you just give a clarification on the resolution?
Well, there's several, there's several encroachment agreements that are the same for these patios, and they were all passed last year, March 26, 2024, and they're up to the 2026 season.
That's when they all come together.
No, no.
End.
Deputy, can you add to it?
You could have brought the 20 minutes...
No, that's, that's why you...
Chief, if I could just jump in here, perhaps it would be helpful if I could go back to our bylaw officer and get him to flush out this and report back to committee and to council, or we could do it through an email, just to make sure that there's clarity on this.
2026. Questions called.
No, I still have one more.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor McKinnon.
Please stand up and ask your question.
Okay. I guess at the end of the day, so now, so we know it's two years' time, 2026, so, and I did hear there was a lot of money invested in patios, and I know that, but there's also when they apply, they know there's expiry date to that. And I think the concern I was hearing from the downtown business was they're running out of places for people to park to be able to get into their establishments. There's a lot of patios going up, and it didn't seem to be a process. It just seemed to be applying, you get it. And so, it sounds that we're getting over consumed with patios in the downtown area. I'm not sure what the answer is, but that's why I was looking for a study or someone to do an evaluation on the amount of spots we're losing for construction versus the amount we're giving out for patios. And if we're losing more than usual for construction, maybe we back off on the patios. But if the agreements are in place now for 2026, I guess there's not a whole lot we could do about it. That's correct, so, okay, thank you.
Deputy Mary Yankoff, you wanna add some clarification?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Tracy, for finding that so quickly. You know, there is probably a little bit of investigation by the, your committee, Council McCabe, because last year, I mean, I've been just talking about these patio bylaws forever and a day, and last year, when we passed the encroachment order, obviously, we misread it, or misunderstood it, or it was written incorrectly. Because last year, when we passed the encroachment orders for two years, that would be for the summer of 2024 and 2025, the bylaw reads till the end of 2026, but that's wrong. It's supposed to be March 31st of the end of our fiscal year, because starting the summer of 2026, we will have a brand-new bylaw in place that everyone will have been put on alert at the end of this year that it ends. So, there's a mistake in that bylaw, so further investigation needs to be done. Not sure what we can do now, because we all passed it, because we, obviously, we missed it, but it was crystal clear last year, it was two years. So, so, thank you, Chief, for taking that little file on for now and seeing what we can find out, because as Council Bernard said, you know, it's a dog's breakfast downtown right now.
But to clarify, these are, these are up till 2026, correct? Next year?
No, they're supposed to be for two years.
Yeah.
The summer of 2024 and the summer of 2025. We passed this in March of 2024, so we're one year in.
Right.
And it should expire on the date of that resolution, whenever we did that for two years.
But as Tracy said, we've already passed resolutions up to the 2026 season.
I know, which is why we just need to check out with minutes and stuff like that, so, that way we're all...
But to give certainly, did he...
Because if not, the patio operators are given three years and an encroachment order, not two.
So, to give island resto and bar notification, are they working as an outdoor patio until 2026, the end of the season, or are they not? Well, that's, the resolution is right here. It's, so it says 2026, the end of the season.
May not be January 1st, 2026? And that it's ready for this? Does it say season? Okay, well, then that has to be looked at. We'll have to go back. I mean, right now, we have all the operators that are going on the 2026.
Yeah, to the end of the season.
And this one was looping in, so this is a bigger problem than this particular resolution.
This is the last one, is it not? Yeah. So, are we okay to pass it? Okay. Question called? Questions called? All in favor? Against? Okay, Counselor Beck, okay. Okay, then we got a first reading, is it? Do you wanna read that?
Your Worship, this is the bylaw to repeal certain bylaws, 2021 RCB-01, a bylaw to repeal the City of Charlottetown Taxi Bylaw, number 2021 TX-01. Be it resolved that the bylaw to repeal the City of Charlottetown Taxi Bylaw, number 2021 TX-01, be read a first time, and that's moved by Council Julie McCabe and seconded by Council Bob Duran.
Okay, now, just remember, this is the first reading. This is the only time you can debate on it. Some of the concerns I brought up at the committee meeting, they were in the report about certification of drivers, inspection of vehicles, the cost of, how do we raise the, you know, determine the cost, or do we go to meters for our taxi operators? I know Summerside has repealed theirs. Have we done, have we conducted best practices with other municipalities?
Thank you, Your Worship.
No, I just have another, another, okay, go ahead. No, go, go ahead. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, you're not interrupting. You weren't at the last meeting, though, and a lot of those questions were answered by our bylaw officer in that, I know you're concerned, that this really does go back to the time of the old taxi stands when they came around and the drivers were there and they, you know, didn't have, we have industries now changing, we have ride share, rumor has Ubers coming to Charlottetown. They're very clear that they have challenges, monitoring and enforcing this bylaw. They don't have control if someone comes in and transfers the car and someone else is driving. So, we, we aren't doing our job to enforce this, that we heard that very loud and clear from the people that are supposed to enforce it, and to bring it up to speed to where we are. They want industry to be able to take care of those things. When you have competition within industry, you're gonna get better prices, as we know, so, I really know that if our bylaw officers and our police services are saying that this isn't a bylaw that's up to date or current for 2025, and in the report, as you can see why, we are the only place still operating under this bylaw. I mean, everything's done now in technology and things, it's just a different time, and they have to follow the law. Their registration and their insurance and their licensing has to come from the province. It really has nothing to do with our bylaw officers. So, at this time, there was lots of discussion, Your Worship. I'm sorry you weren't there for that last meeting, but a lot of those points were addressed, and, and it was pretty clear as to why it's okay.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just curious to know, has there been any consultation with the, with the local taxi stands? And if so, where do they stand? Like, how does this, are they in support of repealing it? I mean, does it benefit them? Is it going to hurt them? I haven't heard much on this, so, you know, I have to plead that I, you know, I'm a little bit behind on how this is impacting the local taxis.
There definitely has been consultation. That was presented at a committee meeting, too. Do you have any real update on that, though? I mean, I don't think they were really, other than going out and doing the initial inspections and things, there wasn't a whole lot more after that anyway, but you can speak to this. I think that's why they're asking us to repeal the bylaw.
Chief? Excuse me, what did you ask?
So, they are?
They are asking for the...
They have had consultation.
But they're asking for the repeal of it? Is that what your question was?
No, that's why I said, that's why our police are asking for the repeal.
Yeah, not the, not the operators. Okay, go ahead, Chief.
Your Worship, Chair, we have done lots of consultation with industry and stakeholders regarding this. I can tell you, my staff has strongly recommended this. There are no opponents to repealing this that I'm aware of, or I'm told, and that includes people at the taxi stands. A lot, you know, a lot of staff's recommendation is factored into, into just the evolution of our taxi industry. This just didn't come upon us. There's been a lot of due diligence over the last number of years by staff to try to work with the industry to, to help it consolidate or find some synergies to meet the demands, but there has not been a lot of success there. So, staff feels that we're actually probably hindering progress in our industry by, by having this bylaw in place that the competition, by taking away, will actually improve service.
Yeah. Again, I just wanna put my concerns in the public record about certification, about checks, you know, police checks, about vehicle inspection, and I know in the City of Fredericton, which is about 77,000, they have both a taxi bylaw and a Uber-type of online, online-type of taxi bylaw. So, it's not like we're, we're following everybody else. There are other municipalities that are using. So, my concerns, I just want them on the public record, and that's all I've said right from the start. Okay. Wanna read it? Okay, all those, okay, nope. Shall it carry? Contrary? Okay, read it.
Resolved that the bylaw to repeal the City of Charlottetown Taxi Bylaw, 2021 TX-01, be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, moved by Council Julie McCabe, seconded by Council Bob Duran.
Shall it pass?
Close the motion.
Yeah, it, the motion is very easy. Bylaw to repeal certain bylaws. Yep, that's it.
I think you've read it a while ago.
Then we can, because it's first, it's first reading, that's the only time you're allowed to debate it. Okay, so we have a resolution under new business for the FCM appoint nominee.
We do, Your Worship, that is related to the resolution previously approved on FCM. Moved by Council Julie McCabe, seconded by Council Justin Matar. Be it resolved that the attached new business resolution, 2025 COCR 0053, approved March 31st, 2025, be rescinded, and the following resolution with a revised end date of June 2027 be approved. That Charlottetown City Council endorse Deputy Mayor Anna Yankoff to stand for election on the Federation of Canadian Municipalities FCM Board of Directors for the period starting June 2025 and ending June 2027. And be it further resolved that council assumes all costs associated with Deputy Mary Yankoff's attending FCM's Board of Directors meetings.
Question? Oh, Counselor Beck?
I do have a question.
Thank you.
2026 falls in the middle of, and I know we received an email about that. So, if Deputy Mary Yankoff decides to not reoffer, because we know she'd get reelected if she, if she were to run, but, and a vacancy becomes, what happens there? Does, does, do we, do we appoint someone within here and then to replace, to replace her? If she's successful, is that how that works? I just wanted to clarify that.
I think Counselor Twill has some background on that. I think Counsel Duffy filled in, correct? Counsel Twill to finish off your term? Can you enlighten us?
Finish off my term.
Okay. But, but we don't deal with ifs. Deputy?
Thank you. And with conversation with the Provincial Federation today, this is a directive from the FCM, and so they're well aware of the provincial elections that are coming a year from this November, which would mean that my term would be up in January, should I not reoffer, or should I not be reelected? And they have mechanisms in place then to then offer in what they would loosely refer to as a by-election, to put somebody else in that position until the following FCM year. So, that's, that's their, that's their directive, not ours, so.
Question? Questions called? All those in favor? Nine-zero. Motion to adjourn? Carry.